Okay, welcome, everybody. I'm going to start the meeting. It is Ojai Redevelopment and Agency Successor Agency Regular Meeting, 7:00, February 24, 2015. Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Blatz.
Here.
Mayor Lara.
Here.
And Councilmember Clapp is absent this evening.
Could I have Councilmember Haney lead us on the Pledge of Legions?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public communication is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the City Council Successor Agency Board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matter raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will generally referred to staff or and/or placed on the subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no actions can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council board are requested to fill out a speaker's card prior to the council board reaching this point on the agenda. Comments must be limited to three minutes or less. Our first speaker is Deborah Moe.
Councilmembers, how is everybody? I want to start off by saying I really appreciated your tribute to your mother last meeting. I watched it at home and I was touched. I also want to talk about procedures. Mr. Wirick brought up going over past procedures. You know, what is being done? Something comes up, we're going to turn it over to staff. Something else comes up, well, staff is looking at that one, too, and on and on and on and on. Well, a while ago, it was brought to the attention of the council. There's a dead tree on the corner of Bristol and El Paso. And I believe it's on city property, although from what I understand, it's on city property. It doesn't look like it. It's dead. It's dangerous. The kids from Matilla Hall walk by it every day. And in this last storm, a branch fell, and it's my neighborhood and I'm worried about it. Next thing is Meg Goodwin last meeting brought up about having a pesticide-free town. There's a pesticide-free, organic town in Northern California called Fairfax. And, gosh, it's just great. They're dry cleaners. I mean, everything. It's doable, except I know that they don't have the orchards and stuff like we have. Next, I wanted to thank Mr. Haney for bringing up the need for checklists, checks and balances about when you come to get a permit. Walk up, city clerk, check, good to go. I think that there needs to be some checks and balances there. I think there needs to be a list. And I would really like to see it. Something happened about that. I also think that we need a cultural resource officer or a commissioner. I know the budget. Betsy went over the, you know, we're cramped on budget and whatever, but, I mean, gosh, our town was built on Schumash property and land, whatever, and I think it really needs to be embraced, endured, and looked after. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you for listening.
Can I ask you to cross street with Paso in that tree?
El Paso and Bristol.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daddy.
Good evening, council. I'm here to give you a water report. Mr. Haney, you said please come early and often. Long Journey is about to end, March 11th, at 9:00 a.m. in Ventura. And it's at the Santa Clara area. Is that correct, Mr. Blatz? The courthouse there?
Yes, it's on Santa Clara Street.
Santa Clara Street, that courthouse. We're going to hear the appeal. Now, again, to bring everybody up to speed, the eminent domain was won. The judge ruled in favor of Casitas, the eminent domain was won. It was then appealed by Golden State. In the meantime, we have six briefs put in, Friends of the Court briefs, for Casitas, the League of California Cities, California State Districts. On the other side, we had some private, for-profit water companies like Park Carlisle come in. And this is really a matter of, as Golden State said, if it were about eminent domain, we wouldn't be here. It's about them trying to force us to use a funding mechanism that we agreed to at 87.4 percent. We agreed to take Melrose tax rather than a different type of a taxing because it was efficient, it saved money, and it was more fair. So we agreed to do this, and they're fighting not about the price and not about the terms or conditions. They're trying to find a blocking action to get this thing to fold by resisting and picking apart this item about Melrose rather than a different individual tax. Now, in the meantime, there has been a question asked about their standing. So we have the appellate court, which is ready to go on the 11th, and we have another issue. It's about the standing that Golden State has. Again, we have no disagreement on what the price is. We have no disagreement on what we're buying. We have no disagreement on how much equipment there is. We have no disagreement. It's an agreement as whether we spend green dollars or blue dollars. And that's what this thing has gotten down to. So I would hope we pack the courtroom. I would hope, because Golden State claimed that this was an invalid vote with only 87.4 percent of the people responding in the affirmative, that we could go and show up in the courtroom Wednesday, the 11th of March, and show the judge that this was not an invalid vote. And the fact is, we're not trying to replace one water company with another. We're trying to get better service, more reliable service. We're trying to get service where we have confidence that when that fire engine goes off, that our chief, Mr. Plots, when he opens up that hydrant like he did for one of the other fires for a councilman, there will be water at the end of that hydrant that he can use to put out that fire that he didn't have the last time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Daddy said. That's not the regular courthouse in Ventura. It's the Court of Appeal, and it's in a building on Santa Clara Street, not the one on Victoria.
9:00 a.m. Councilmember Wirick?
Mr. Daddy, could you spend one minute informing the public, especially those watching, how many other organizations have filed supporting briefs for the city of, I mean, the Flo's position on this matter?
Well, Best Bestin Krieger, which had represented, I believe, around eight or 10 Southern California communities down in Division 3, we're up in Division 1. Kendall McVeigh is the lead attorney for that. And Kendall McVeigh wrote the brief for us, and we have four different state commissions. Okay? We have four that have, the ambassador's brief is Friend of the Court, on our position, and they were very, very good. You can look this thing up on the Ojai Flow website. You can go in and you can read what the briefs are, what they say, and you can read the pros and cons and come away with your own determination. The most important thing is going to be this. They get their rate of return based on the income taxes they file with the Security and Stock Exchange, with the IRS, with the California Public Utility Commission, and they file and say, "Our plant is worth X amount of dollars." And based on that, they get a rate of return. So to say it's worth more is going to be pretty interesting when they swear under oath that the tax information they file to the securities and to the IRS are not what they've been filing to get their rate of return these years. So I'm fairly confident, it's been six years for a number of us, it's been 10 years for others, I'm pretty confident that we're going to go ahead and win this thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, councilmembers. My name's Tom Farmer. Live at 410 West Matilla Hall Street in Ojai, and I'm also chairman of the Building Appeals With respect to Item 5 on the City Council Agenda for tonight's meeting, proposed revision to City Second Dwelling Compliance Program, Item 5, allow me to call your attention to the Community Developers Directors Administration Report dated 2/11/15, which points out that some revisions were recommended by the Appeals Board to the document presented for approval at the 10/29/14 meeting. The Board has not had a chance to consider the final document inclusive of these revisions as a deliberative body, and members of the Appeals Board did not have a chance to see the final draft until the agenda was posted for the City Council meeting. As the Appeals Board is meeting...
Pardon me. I know, I don't want to seem rude, but do you want to wait until this item comes up? Or do you want to, because we are going to talk about it?
That's Item Number 5. That's the very end of the meeting, is that right? I believe.
Yes, it's near. Yes, we're going to have a couple items beforehand. Were you not going to be here?
Well, I have this to hand out to you also, if that's appropriate.
I don't know if you'd rather read it when the item comes up so it could be fresh on our mind.
I can.
Mayor Lara, I think that perhaps what Chairman Farmer might be looking at is, we generally have a commission reports agenda item, and that's not on here.
Oh, yeah, that's the first meeting of the month.
Right, and I think he might have been expecting...
All right.
And so I think he was just, you know...
Or you want to give more of Appeals? Because I'm more than happy to give you the floor for Appeals.
Well, I could pass this out also, but I can finish what I was reading.
Go.
If you'd like.
Proceed.
Anyway, the Board has not had a chance to consider the final document inclusive of these revisions as a deliberative body, and members of the Appeals Board did not have a chance to see the final draft until the agenda was posted for the City Council meeting. As the Appeals Board is meeting the day after the city, which is tomorrow night, we request the council continue the item to give the Board a chance to convene and formally consider the final draft document for recommendation to council for adoption. I'll amend our agenda to give proper notice for considering this item as a February 25th meeting, since I note this item is listed as a discussion item rather than an action item on the February 24 City Council Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could please, thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. There is a growing unrest among the citizens of this community fueled by a growing understanding that its local government has lost touch with those it is supposed to serve and fanned by misstep after mistake. I recently gave 16 people a list of 21 actions in which the city of Ojai has been involved recently. Everything from the cell tower application to the NEF lounge renovation, from street repairs to the abatement of abandoned buildings. I asked them to put a check mark next to the items that they felt the city had handled I ask everyone who checked five or more items to raise their hand, five or more of the 21 items. No one raised their hand. I had the same response when I asked for four and three items. I did have one person raise their hand for two items, but none of the other 15 raised their hand for even one item. There were 21 items on that list, 16 people in the room. On March 10th, which coincidentally is the start of free agency in the NFL, you have a responsibility to this community to thank Mr. Clark for the time he has spent in Ojai and to begin to move us in a direction that's more in keeping with the goals and the standards of the citizens of Ojai and what we want and what we deserve. So I hope you will make yourselves, avail yourselves of that opportunity. I thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing you on the 10th.
Thank you. Mr. Clave?
Good evening. Leonard Clave, 412 North Fulton Street. In a very brief clarification of next Wednesday's court hearing, the courthouse is located at 300 East Santa Clara and 200 East Santa Clara downtown Ventura, not at the Government Center. The Court of Appeals has its own courthouse downtown. The reason I'm here this evening is a story that appeared in the Ojai Valley News a couple of weeks ago about the, what appears to be a moratorium on the completion of repairs to our movie theater. And according to the story, at least, the reason for the moratorium is that the insurance company for Golden State is pondering. That's unacceptable. Golden State, every time they appear at a rate hike increase or at a public forum about our attempts to get rid of them, tells us how much they love Ojai and how much they love the people of Ojai. Well, they caused the damage to the movie theater. There can be no question that they are 100 percent negligent. There's also no question that they are a part of a multinational, multi-billion dollar corporation, and however much money is needed to finish the repairs, they could get from their petty cash drawer. For the people of Ojai and the owners of that building to wait while their insurance company figures out how quickly they're going to get off their wallets is unacceptable. Recently, the Ojai Valley Museum featured an exhibit celebrating 100 years of our movie theater. Our movie theater survived television and radio and DVDs and home entertainment and earthquakes and the depression, but not Golden State Water's negligence. They need to stand up and put forth the money to do this. It's not just the business. One of the things that really impressed me about Ojai when I was considering moving here was that we had a movie theater, single screen, first-run movies, not seven months after they first debuted, but first-run movies, art films on Sunday afternoons, and now we have a film festival. It is an important part of our community, and they need to do something. Now, they are a franchisee of the city. I don't know if the franchise agreement gives the city any leverage in this situation, but I would ask that you check with the city attorney or a city manager to look into that to see if there's anything in the agreement that requires them to fix what they break immediately. Enough is enough. It's time to get our theater back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I kind of mirror Mr. Clave's comments, particularly as the fact that they are a franchisee or a vendor to the city. I don't know if there's any pressure the city can bring to bear on them, but it seems like we ought to be able to do something if their insurance companies are battling back and forth on who's going to cover something. That shouldn't be the problem of the injured party. Mr. Howard, do you have any comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of Councilmember Blatz, we can certainly take a look at the franchise agreement, although I highly doubt that there will be any provision in there that addresses this type of issue in terms of assessing fault in a matter that may involve negligence. You need to hesitate to get in the middle of what is essentially a private dispute over who may have been at fault, what the coverage may be and may not apply. That doesn't mean that you can't encourage, in this case, the party you believe to be at fault, to move forward as quickly as possible. We can certainly do that, but there comes a point in time where you're beginning to try to use the might of local government power to force one side or the other to come to a conclusion, and that can become potentially problematic. But there are some things short of that that we could probably do.
I would request that we do whatever we can. Thank you.
Ms. Pageling?
Good evening. I'm Patty Pageling. I'm with Transition to Organics, and we have a working group called Soil Solutions Network. I wanted to share some information with all of you about an upcoming conference that we're putting on in Santa Paula at the community center there concerning reversing the citrus greening disease, and I know that that's a big concern here in Ojai since we have so many orchards. The good news is that there are field trials that are successfully showing that they can reverse the citrus greening disease. These trials are going on in Florida and also in India, and we're having two people coming who are involved with these trials to talk about the success that they're having. And another concern having to do with the Asian citrusill, it has to do with the spraying that's going on right now in Ventura County as well as right here in Ojai. I know that they've been spraying neonicotinoids, which are very dangerous chemicals that are being pointed at as the cause for a lot of the colony collapse disorder for the bees and also the use of pyrethroids. So in Santa Barbara, they've actually done testing in their waterways. The Creeks Division of Santa Barbara City has done testing for neonicotinoids, and they were very surprised. They thought it was a mistake on the labs part, but they have such a high count of neonicotinoids in their waterways that they're really looking at what they can do to encourage people to not use them. And so I was hoping that perhaps Ojai City would consider doing something similar to look at the possibility of testing for some of these dangerous chemicals. And I have some information here about the possible opt-out that people can take advantage of. If you get a notice on your property that the CDFA wants to come in and spray, and they already have in many cases, you have the opportunity to opt out, and you have to do it very quickly, and you have to be aware that there is actually perhaps a piece of, a paper that they put on your gate or your door saying that they're coming within 24 to 48 hours. So the neonicotinoids not only kill bees but other beneficial insects. They're lethal to birds as well as aquatic systems on which they depend. Pyrethroids kill both bad and good bugs and lead to the resurgence of other pests. And the problem is that these pesticides only weaken the trees, and because there is success using microbial, organic products, we should look into encouraging the people here in Ojai to use those. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the time and place for that event in Santa Paula? You mentioned a...
It's June 25th, and I'll be sure to bring you the information about it.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and tell you of a situation that has arisen recently that's of great concern to my wife and I. I'm Tom Kraus. I'm the co-founder of BST, Behavioral Science Technology, which has been housed at 417 Bryant Circle for the past 20 years. I want to inform you of a very serious situation that has resulted from the action of the city of Ojai, in particular, a new interpretation of the zoning restriction for that area, which has had the effect of drastically reducing the value of our building. So we sold the business, BST, three years ago, but we kept the building and we released it back to the buyer. That lease is now concluded, terminated, and so we put the building on the market for sale. A buyer came along, we negotiated a deal. Deal was in escrow. Five days before the contingencies were to be removed, news of this new interpretation came out, and the buyer withdrew. The withdrawal was directly related to information that he got about the fact that there was some question about whether or not an office building could be at this location, where an office building has been for 20 years. We built the building with the full approval and consent of the city, with permits, with business licenses. It was clear what we were doing there. It was not a secret to anybody. We actually even had a childcare center housed in the building that was also permitted and approved. There was never a hint of a zoning problem. And in fact, we relied on the city in this whole project. I mean, if we would have thought there was a slight chance that we would end up with a 24,000-square-foot building that we couldn't sell or that we would have to give away, that the value, the market value would be reduced drastically, we wouldn't have built that building. So it really puts us in a very difficult and awkward situation. The action that's been taken so far of suspending enforcement of this new interpretation of the zoning requirement really doesn't help us much. I mean, who would buy a building that is arguably in violation of the zoning requirement? I certainly wouldn't, and the buyer that we had that had a deal with, he didn't want to do it. So what we request from you is a clear statement that the M1 zoning allows for professional and administrative offices. And there's also another alternative, and I'm not an expert in these things. I don't know which of these is the better, or if there's a third or a fourth way to deal with this problem, but the second option would be some version of a grandfather clause or variance that would make it clear to the buyer of the building that they were not in jeopardy. That would allow us to take that information to this buyer who has withdrawn and say, "Look, you don't have a problem. Here's evidence of that, and perhaps we could reignite the deal, which would solve the problem." I don't know if we can do that or not. I don't know if he's moved on to other things or if he'd be convinced by that, but it would certainly be a step in the right direction. And perhaps equally importantly, that reassurance from the city would also allow us to continue on our quest to sell the building. As it is, we're just kind of stuck out there in Never Neverland. So I would request your consideration and action, and I would request that the action be very rapid, not in June, but very rapid so that we can deal with this situation without further harm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kraus, I want to, hopefully I'll be corrected if I say anything incorrect by Mr. Howard or by Mr. Clark. The reason for the June 10th date, and I was the one that suggested that, is because my understanding is whether it's a variance or cleaning up the ordinance that obviously is in conflict with the use in the design that was put on that site, that takes public hearings, noticing, and time. And the idea was to try to put a date certain where everyone then could figure back and say, "All right, we got to get going now in order to get done on or before that date." Because I share your concern. It's no fault of your own. The city's planning processes, as I stated before, obviously had a problem here. I must say, and this gives me an opportunity to say that I know we're talking public communications, I'll be very short, is that I did feel it incumbent to bring this to the Planning Commission's attention at the earliest opportunity. And I must say that they did not embrace a sense of urgency when I brought it to their attention. And I just would request that staff understand that we are talking about economic damage here, that no fault... here, that it's no fault of the property owners, and that we just kind of get things in gear here as soon as we can. Either to look at these alternatives or get something put together here for us to start, you know, to deliberate and act on.
Mayor Proton Blatt?
I want to also comment on it. I want us to move this, get it before us as quickly as we can legally to decide what we're going to do, because it's an untenable situation. And no fault of your own, Mr. Kraus, and I apologize on behalf of the city for the absolute chaotic confusion it makes it look like, when you've had a building there for 20 years and then all of a sudden you're told you can't get a building, you can't get a business permit because it's not allowed in the zone. And I can tell you that I was on the Planning Commission when your building was approved. I was on the Planning Commission when other buildings in that area were approved. It was never brought to any of our attention that it was an improper use. So, I'm just requesting, we need to get this before us as early as we possibly can legally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tumamayet?
Good evening, Mr. Lara, council members. I'm here to present a couple of letters in regards to the protection and the assessments of archaeological resources in the area. On February 6th, we had a meeting with Ms. Wald, myself, my sister Julie and I, Don Teening, and Mark Brahmawick. And the discussion is how procedures were perceived and how they're being dealt with according to the archaeological sites that we named, six particular residents or areas in the valley. We've yet to hear any response. Also, the other, the second letter pertains to the idea that consultation, in regards to consultation with the city in order to have access to the records that the city has, and in order to work with Kathleen and the city as far as the archaeological protection of the resources in the area. So, I'd like to be able to present these two letters to you, and thank you very much for your patience and your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Quilice?
Thank you, Mayor Lara, council members. Steve Quilice, 516 West Eucalyptus. Two items tonight. First, I would say you can see the passion about a number of issues in the audience, and that's a recurring theme that we have here. And I would urge you, when you see this passion that you recognize, there are people here in the city who want to help, who want to help you do the right thing in governing the city. And make use of that passion, make use of that energy, and enlist those people in helping you to gather the data so that you can make good decisions with complete, accurate, current data. So, that's item one. Second, I hope we're not doing anything in contravention of that tonight. I've been to the last two Planning Commission meetings, and at the first one, there was a draft ordinance in front of the commissioners. There were actually four versions of the draft ordinance floating around this building. And it was, in fact, the second oldest version that the Planning Commission had in front of them, and they were urged to vote on it. And I urged them not to do so. Others did as well, and they did postpone their meeting for five days. And then, a number of us in the community helped mark up the many errors and omissions in that draft ordinance, and I think what was passed was much more accurate. It certainly was more current. And I'd like to know from our new city attorney if it is, in fact, a violation of the Brown Act to put one version of an ordinance or a resolution or whatever on the city website purporting to be something that's coming up before a commission or before the city council, and then to introduce a differently worded document at the meeting. I don't know if that's a violation, but it doesn't feel right, and I hope we're not doing any of that tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would ask the city attorney if he could give us a brief response to that question. Mr. Howard?
I'm not going to punt on this, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Generally speaking, the Brown Act agenda posting requirements provide that you have a brief, 20 words is generally the word number in the Brown Act, on the agenda to provide the public with notice of what's going to occur, not specific details. I don't have enough information, here's the punt portion, I don't have enough information to assess here and now whether or not there was a potential violation. From my experience, having an ordinance that changes during the meeting, or that where there's a last-minute substitution of the same ordinance, but some minor clauses are changed and some iterations, is not a violation of the Act. But as I say, I don't have enough facts to know if version one was so remarkably different than version two, or version three was so significantly different than version three and so forth, to come to a conclusion here. But generally speaking, changes do occur, and it's not a violation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lowry? Lowry? Levitt? Oh, sorry. Levitt.
Yes, hi. Randy Levitt, 410 Tico. I need the council's assistance with something, because we were treated, I think unfairly, and it can easily be addressed. In 2008, I applied for a well-drilling permit. We live in the Arbolata, and we received it. And part of that permit, we had to send notice to the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. They didn't have a problem. We were granted the permit. I asked the city at the time if the permit expired and was told that it didn't. There was, I have the application here, nowhere did it say that it expired, and I wasn't notified that it expired and was told otherwise, as I said. And so, I didn't proceed at the time. I was, the cost is really expensive, and I wanted to interview different drillers. Then we wanted to wait and see what happened with the Ojai flow. And because it keeps dragging on and on, we want to have the ability to drill. So, I'd ask you to, now, I have found out recently that there's a moratorium that's been put on drilling wells, and I spoke with Mr. Baggerly about it at a meeting, two meetings ago here, and he indicated that he wouldn't object to our drilling now if we got a new permit. So, or a, I guess, some sort of extension of the existing permit. So, I'd like to ask you to please consider and grant us in addition, I don't know, continuation, whatever, of the permit that we have, so that we can drill a well if we want to.
Okay. Thank you. If you don't mind, providing, we don't know the ins and outs, and since this is public comment, we can't discuss really this matter, but I don't know if there is something we could do, but we could follow up with you. Mayor Proton Blatt?
I'm just going to ask Mr. Howard. What's the proper, where's the proper place for this gentleman to go as far as requesting it as a Planning Commission?
I don't have any facts at all about this, so I don't want to misstep and speak out of school. I think if he has any written material, that he can present him to the city manager, possibly Director of Public Works, and they can follow up.
Okay. It just seems to me that permits have an expiration. A building permit, six months you have to begin construction.
If you don't act on them, correct.
And if you have missed that six-month deadline, then there has to be a process to go to to see if you can get it extended versus having to go get a new one.
Depending upon-
This happens to be a water well versus a building permit, and if we could just point him in the right direction as to who he goes to.
Yeah, I think we need to start with whatever documentation he has and work from there. I think, either the city manager or the director of public works.
Who would that go to, though?
Bring it to me.
Okay. Then bring it to the city manager, and we'll get the ball rolling for you.
Appreciate it. So, I will bring you a copy of the application, the approved application. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you. I have no more speakers cards. Anybody else wishing to? Mr. Ulrich and then Ms. Hanson.
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. I have two questions regarding specifically, and these are building appeals board-related matters, but I think they apply to where the city is relative to, in the first instance, to the county fire department. This specifically references Appendix L of the Title IX of the city. Building ordinances. It is my understanding that the building L modifications, excuse me, Appendix L modifications that were suggested by the Building Appeals Board have not been either processed or conveyed to county fire department. And at this particular point in time, the city is forwarding building permit applications for county fire review to the folks down Camarillo, and they're reviewing it according to the full, unmodified per city of Ojai Appendix L standards. So, I guess the question is where what is, and where is the modified Appendix L, and has the city of Ojai transmitted the same to county fire, and county fire responded? The second question I have is relative to when will a building permit applicant or anything related to an application to this community development department, and that would reference CUPs, DRPs, et cetera. When will an official city of Ojai intake checklist be available? In other words, something for the folks who step up to the counter to be handed, as is done at the county of Ventura, by the folks in the planning counter as well as the building counter. It is, a checklist is issued to an applicant. It is signed by the person who is pushing it across the counter, who's the representative of the county, and dated. There is some understanding of what the general, and in this case, more specific parameters necessary for an application are. So, that's my questions, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know we did talk about the checklist for the buildings. Hopefully, we'll get a follow-up to that question soon. And then, also, a great question about following up with the county fire department about Appendix L. It would be good for us, and also possibly provide it to the buildings appeals boards.
Do you think it would be possible to give a briefing to the building appeals board tomorrow night on this matter?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. Good questions. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. Dale Hanson, live in the city. My comment is not in the same vein as the other comments made tonight, but I hope you'll take it just as seriously. And I'm hoping that the city would pass a resolution, as other cities have done, many other cities have done, against the declawing of cats. I don't know if you know what that's about. It's not just removing the nail, it's removing the first knuckle, which many cats become traumatized by. They no longer are defensive, they can't go outside anymore, they can't climb a tree, and it's really a violation to do that to an animal. And I'd like to see the city of Ojai pass a resolution against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing no hands, I will move on to the consent calendar and detain the motion. Or I don't know if anybody has any items they want to pull? No? If not?
So, move approval of consent items, 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D.
Roll call.
Haney?
Yes.
Wierich?
Aye.
Blatt?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. Going to be moving on to public hearing, our first item, the text amendment to the Ojai Municipal Code, repealing Section 10-2.172 and amending Chapter 14 of the Title 10 relating to regulation to wireless telecommunication facilities. And I will turn it over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I'd like to make a few comments before we turn it over to Mr. Kramer. First of all, as you know, we post our agendas about a week in advance of the city council meeting, so that the council and the community has an opportunity to see what's being proposed and has an opportunity to respond to it. And I always hate to be in a situation where there's a need to make last-minute changes. But in this case, we did have some matters come up. The attorneys reviewed the proposed ordinance as it relates to the federal laws and determined that there were some technical changes that needed to be made. They advised us of that on Monday, and so, we've provided that to you in a revised ordinance that's also in red-line version. Furthermore, we received public input primarily on the topic of notice and how notice of various actions would be put out under the ordinance or under procedures that we will adopt subsequent to the ordinance. And so, we asked the attorneys to address that, and that's also included in the memo and in a minor way in the ordinance itself. But, you know, occasionally this happens, and I know when this came before the Planning Commission, it came up at the last minute and caused a lot of confusion. And I think the Planning Commission did the right thing. They gave everybody time to respond to it and to have a second hearing.
Is that new version on the website?
It is on the website. It was put on the website yesterday. There are copies out on the lobby, and you have copies on your desk, as well as the copies you receive by email.
And I just want to ask the public, did you guys receive those copies? Have you guys? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Most of the dialogue tonight will be about the contents of the ordinance, and Mr. Kramer will do that, but there were a couple of issues that go beyond the ordinance that have to do with height and noise, and I wanted to comment on those a little bit before we go to the ordinance itself. So, because of the need to get a height ordinance in place in time to deal with any applications that come in when the shot clock process starts, we have already started the height ordinance process. In order to modify heights, we have to go through a SEQA process and a consultation process with other agencies that takes a number of days. And then, we have to go to a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and then public hearings before the city council. So, all of those have been lined up so that we can have that process completed, if it goes smoothly, by the city council by April 28th, which means that the new height limits set through that process would go into effect on May 28th. We've asked the attorneys about whether or not that provides enough time to deal with any applications that come in, starting in early April when the shot clock provision's going to effect. And they've indicated that there is, because you're not vested until you get a building permit. And so, we would, even though we'd be in the processing time potentially for an application, it would not be approved, and there would not be a building permit issued before the new height limits go into effect, if they go into effect in accordance with the schedule. So, bottom line is that there is a process to get the height addressed. And so, the Planning Commission hearing on that is on March 18th, and that'll be the first step. So, we'd encourage public participation in that. The second issue that came up is noise. And noise is a much more difficult issue to deal with. The concern is that the possibly air conditioning equipment or other equipment that's associated with a new cell tower, especially in the evening hours, especially in the summer when people have their windows open, would generate a disturbance for residential areas. What you want to have with a noise ordinance is something that relates to the ambient noise in the community. And in order to figure out what the ambient noise is, because we don't have documentation of that, there would be a need for a study of some sort. And so, we think that the long-term, or at least a potential long-term solution to dealing with noise is to actually do a study that helps us determine what the ambient noise is in the community, and then we can look at our requirements that we have in the code right now and determine if they're appropriate or if they're not. However, that process would take too long as it relates to any applications that come in early. So, we've since new, under this scheme that we're discussing tonight, since a new cell tower requires a CUP, we've recommended- tower requires a CUP, we're, we've recommended that the council consider blessing a standard that would be five decibels over ambient noise for any CUP, not just cell tower CUPs, because we have to apply the same standard to a cell tower as we have, as we do to any other use. So if we go with a condition like this, it would mean that any use that comes in for a CUP would have to do a noise study and would have to determine what the ambient noise is and then couldn't go more than five decibels more than that. I think that would handle the cell tower issue. I'm just a little bit concerned that there would be an unexpected consequence for other people who have to do noise studies. So another potential approach is to maybe say, you know, currently the nighttime noise level in a residential neighborhood is 45 decibels. You could knock that down to 35 and say the noise study's only required for anything that would be more than 35. And I guess the final thing I would say on this is the, what we do with noise needs to be decided fairly soon, but it doesn't need to be decided tonight. So it'd be entirely acceptable to hear council commentary, public commentary, and hold the noise part over to a subsequent meeting before you make a final decision on how you handle noise. But I, I would say that it's something that we've really struggled with trying to figure out how to solve. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Mr. Kramer will go into this in more detail, but there are a number of provisions for public notification within the ordinance. And there's also a requirement that we develop procedures, that the city manager develop procedures, and that those procedures be reviewed and decided on by the city council. And so that's a subsequent step. After the ordinance has been adopted, we'll be coming forward with proposed procedures to address public input in the areas of the ordinance where those, those procedures are called for. So when Mr. Kramer goes through this, I'm sure he'll address how the ordinance deals with notice right now, but this is not the last bite at the apple, so to speak, as far as, as that piece is concerned. So then the other thing I wanted to talk about is the process. The regulations under which this is being promulgated came out in October, and so soon after we sat down with Mr. Kramer and came up with a process for developing the ordinances. The first step of that process was to hold a meeting with industry representatives. And I know that that has been called out as being something that was not particularly transparent. And so I think one of the things I'd like Mr. Kramer to do is to address why that process occurred and why it was done. But basically, that was the recommendation on how to proceed on this, and I think it was, uh, there were good reasons for that. We then produce, through Mr. Kramer and his company, produced a draft ordinance which was posted on our website on the 13th of January. As you know, we had a workshop on the 20th of January. There were also two planning commission hearings on February 4th and February 9th, and now it's before the city council with the recommendations of the planning commission. I do think that the second planning commission hearing followed a very good process, which is that we posted the proposed ordinance in Word format on our website, and we invited people to redline it with comments. And then the attorneys worked all weekend going over the redline comments and making recommendations to the planning commission to either accept, modify, or reject those which were made. So that would complete my portion of the presentation, and then I turn it over to Mr. Kramer to...
I just have a process comment.
Sure.
Not a, not a substantive one. One, I request that, especially since we have engaged additional resources with site specific, I believe, on contract planning services, that we do everything possible to make sure that that word tentative li- on page three, associated with setting the planning commission hearing on March 18th, 2015, is, is ignored. And that we marshal the available resources. I think the citizens really expect that, that, that makes sure that that is the priority for that meeting on March 18th, to say to our timetable, and there'd be no tentative associated with it.
Right. And, and I can report that we have got the sequence stuff to the point where we're on schedule for that.
Thank you. Second process point. I think the citizens also have expressed to me a desire on the, on the idea of public notification procedures, that after adoption for first reading, then, you know, in that period of, before the ordinance goes into effect, well, it'll be after the second reading when we approved it, and then there's 30 days after that for it to go into effect, that in that, in that period before it goes into effect, that we try to establish some proposed procedures and approval before it goes into effect, not afterwards.
Any other comments? No? I'll turn it over to Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jonathan Kramer, your special counsel for this long and very important process. I'm not going to give a very long presentation because frankly, we've all been through this a number of times and as late as several weeks ago. I will simply say that the ordinance that is in front of you is the product of a tremendous amount of community input, which was exceptionally valuable. I echo the city manager's comments about the fact that it really worked that we went out and that the planning commission did continue the, its hearing for five days so that we could get that additional input from the community. It really strengthened the product that is before you tonight. I'm simply going to kind of talk generally about the structure and the goals of the ordinance, and then I'm going to talk about the process. But as, as I've been asked, I'm going to talk first about the industry meeting that occurred.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you please open the public hearing?
Oh, yes. I'll open the public hearing. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Talking about procedure.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we go through an ordinance process, an ordinance like this is extremely technical in nature. It deals with technology issues in terms of trying to meet our obligations to regulate aesthetically and trying to work with the industry that deals technically. It's been my experience over many years of writing ordinances that getting input from one side and then the other, and one side here being the industry, the other side being the public, not that they're opposed, but they have different issues and different interests, is more efficient. Quite frankly, having a meeting with the industry and talking about their technical concerns that go into ordinance issues and doing that at, before the public has a chance to see the draft, gives a better product and one that requires fewer revisions later on, because we understand what the industry's concerns are from their technology needs. But then we overlay that afterwards with the public's concerns. So it's actually the right order. You, you don't want to go out to the public, get its input, and then backtrack from that with, with industry overlays. So it's a common process. It occurs, it's occurred here, it occurs in virtually every other community, whether we're leading that process or, or others. So that's, that's the background as to why that meeting happened. And there was no draft of the ordinance, it was simply an outline of potential sections that was provided to the, for that meeting for discussion purposes only. So with that, if you look at attachment A to the staff report tonight, which is the redline version, and I'll draw your attention to page three of attachment A, which for our purposes is the table of contents for the new ordinance. This is really very straightforward, and in terms of the bulk of the regulations, the bulk of the regulations are in section 10 dash 14 dot 050 and 10 dash 14 dot 060. They establish the majority of the rules. There's some important rules in terms of location, the preference list, that's on section, or that's in section 050. It's on page nine of attachment A. I know that that's going to be an area that there will be quite a bit of discussion on, but the goal of that has simply been to provide a guideline to say, start here and you, you start at public property, and the last place that you can go to, if you've run out of all other options and you've demonstrated that to the satisfaction, the reasonable satisfaction of the city, is that then you get into residential. We can't exclude residential because that frankly would potentially facially violate the rules that have been laid down to us by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in terms of where wireless sites go. So we've structured it in a way that provides for compliance with the federal laws interpreted in the Ninth Circuit, and that's why we have the safety valves basically built into this. In terms of the general structure, other things that I'll tell you in terms of, that are important to the process, and this gets into the issue of the changes that were proposed, the technical changes that the city manager spoke to in, in his presentation to you, deal with an element about growth of cell sites. There was a, a strange change between the FCC's rules announced in October, and those rules actually printed in the federal register in January of this year, and that's what prompted the technical changes. And I wish we had brought them forward a little bit sooner, but frankly, it was, it was buried so deeply in that most of the city attorneys that we talked with hadn't caught it either. So we're, we're bringing it to you tonight before first reading. As the cover memo indicates, it really affects primarily three sections, 14 060 D3, E3, and 060 F3. And that's simply to delete some words that talk about horizontal expansion, because those words were omitted in the FCC's actual report published in the federal register. So you'll notice in, in attachment A, the, the words that are being struck are shown and strike out in those sections. I rather suspect that the commission will at some point correct its error, but until it does, we felt it was safer to go ahead and strike this now to avoid a potential facial challenge on the ordinance rather than waiting to see if the FCC caught its error and would fix it. At that point in the future, if the FCC does change that and corrects it, then we'll probably come back with a very short text amendment to add those words back in. But that's the reason for the change tonight before first reading. We've adopted essentially virtually all of the comments that were made by the public during the planning commission hearings phase. There are some things that we couldn't for reasons that we explained at the planning commission hearing. If we can go over those as they come up, but we were able to adopt, certainly I think the, the majority of them and the ones that were clearly not in conflict with any other existing federal requirements or state requirements. And really, I, I, we can go through section by section, or we can follow another process as you prefer, but I, I really want to leave it up to the council to how much time we want to spend at the front end now as opposed to looking at questions from council and perhaps from the public.
I think we could ask questions, and I think you gave an overall view of where we're at, and I, I did want you to highlight the front page memo of those revisions that you proposed yesterday, so that the public has opportunity to hear what those are. And, and then we'll, I think I'll just turn it over to council, see if they have any specific questions, my colleagues. If not, then I do have questions in regard to... Let's see. No, I did have... Going back to the noise level.
Yes.
Or the noise ordinance, and you did reference that there was on page 2 dash 3 on the original draft administrative report, there is mentioned that the condition, we're talking about the noise ordinance, that interim assistant city attorney believes such a condition is enforceable based on the general plans, general preference of minimizing noise impact on residential property. This will require that all project notches cell towers that are subject to a CUP prepare a noise study to establish an applicable ambient noise level. So just, could you elaborate on that a little bit more on, about the process and how that's, how that would impact a CUP process?
The reason why it's, it's being handled outside of this ordinance first, to get that out of the way, is that the FCC allows us to enforce generally applicable safety standards. And a noise standard is a generally applicable safety standard outside of this ordinance. If it were here, it would apply to wireless, wireless installations only, it would not be generally applicable. So by moving it out, as has been proposed, it solves that, it actually makes the city's noise standard, whatever it ends up being, more enforceable under the wireless ordinance than if it were in the wireless ordinance itself. So that's why the city manager has recommended the process he has to develop a comprehensive standard, because then it's generally applicable and straightforward and enforceable for wireless operators as well.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I do. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kramer, I, I'm, I'm looking at this more from a broad standpoint, and my question is simple. Why did we have a meeting with the industry at all?
Because they're affected by this ordinance, and to draft an ordinance that affects a, a specific industry without its input is not a proper process from my viewpoint. It makes our entire process less defendable. So by talking to the industry, as well as talking to the public, we're, we're making sure that everybody who's going to be affected by the ordinance has a chance to be heard.
But why do we really, if, if our ultimate goal is to not have, whether that be out front or behind the scenes or whatever, the community does not want to have, we'd be very happy if we never had another telecommunications tower in our city. Why do we want to invite input from the industry that we really aren't wanting here in the first place? And why would we want to give them an opportunity to give us language that makes it easier for them to come into our community?
We're not able to prevent wireless companies from coming in to serve Ojai. That's the law. It's a federal standard. It begins right at the telecommunications act. So we cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting, that's the standard in section 703 of the telecom act. We can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of the telecommunications service here, a wireless service. So if we're going to have that, then the goal is to properly regulate it. Now, one of the things that we're not allowed to do is essentially to create regulations that, that's the effect of prohibiting part of it. So again, as I said earlier, the, the process of inviting the industry to come in and tell us what their needs are, and then inviting the public to come in and tell us what their needs are, is a fair and balanced process designed to make sure that if the ordinance is challenged, we have a record, as we do, that we didn't create these regulations in a vacuum and, and impose them on people who had no chance to have a fair hearing in front of the city in terms of the process of developing the rules.
Okay. But, but this isn't your first ordinance.
No.
What the industry would say to us in Ojai is probably the same thing the industry would say in any city. And I still don't understand why we ask them to come to the table when quite frankly, I'm hoping that we're creating an ordinance that makes it as difficult as possible within the law to come to Ojai, yet we're going to take their input, which makes it easier for them. That's the part I don't understand.
I would think that, number one, this ordinance doesn't make it easier for them. Number two, yes, it's been done in other places, but I'm not a substitute for giving an opportunity for a carrier to be heard in the situation where it's going to be regulated. So while I probably have a really decent handle, as I think I do, on what the industry's needs are, I don't substitute my knowledge for theirs, which is why every time this happens, there have been times when, when meetings have happened days apart, and where interestingly enough, different issues came up in different communities. So that's why it's appropriate, and frankly, from a record standpoint, absolutely necessary to have the meeting. Now, let me address one other scenario, which is, gee, why not just have one meeting where everybody comes in and puts everything down at the same time? Most city attorneys will tell you that in situations like that, you never get down to the, to the end game of trying to get all the information out, because meetings like that become... become debates between various interest groups, and it simply isn't efficient or productive.
Okay. Could you point me in the right direction as to specifically what you have included in the ordinance that was asked for by the industry? What provisions have came out of the meeting that the city had with the industry representatives that you have included in this ordinance?
Interestingly, the one thing that the industry made clear that was important to them is that there couldn't be a straight prohibition on wireless sites. That didn't come from them, that comes from the law. Their most important concern, I think, was to make sure that whatever ordinance we wrote would comply with the rules that have been established by the courts that reviewed the Telecom Act and ruled on it. There wasn't anything new. The industry wanted actually some standards for larger equipment cabinets by right. We didn't include it. Industry wanted permitting processes for colocations that were less strenuous than in the current draft. We didn't include it. So while we have the meetings, really not a whole lot came out of that that came into this ordinance that wouldn't have been there anyway because it's a requirement of law.
So is it accurate for me to assume then that there's absolutely nothing in this ordinance that wouldn't have been written into the ordinance without that meeting with the industry representatives?
I think that's a fair assumption. I'm trying to think if there was anything more specific than that, and I can't really think that there was. I mean, it wasn't, this was a meeting that lasted, we had three representatives from the industry who came to speak, and it really wasn't a very long meeting. They basically told us what their positions were, what their primary concern was, which was compliance with law and no prohibition. We told them what we thought is the general framework of the ordinance coming forward, and that was about it.
All right, thank you.
I do have another question about noticing. This did come up, and I reviewed most of my emails, and a lot had to do with sufficient time to notice the public. I did see that you added a couple of places where you would notice complete applications. Do you think it would be appropriate to notice when there's an application just in general being submitted? Does it have to be complete? To just let the public know that there has been an application?
I personally think that the earliest possible notice is important, even if the application is not complete, because it gives the public the greatest amount of time to follow the project. As all of you know, and certainly I'm sure the public does too, a project that comes into the city is rarely the project that is brought forward for approval. So if you waited for a project to be complete, especially for example, a colocation where that wouldn't occur until the 30th day out of 60, then there's less opportunity. So putting the notice up when it comes in, which is essentially what's here, is an appropriate process.
Because it says posting all complete applications, so we would change that to...
Well, a complete application doesn't mean that the project is deemed complete. Those are different, those have different legal words. A project, an application that is complete comes in, and it's not necessarily deemed complete by the city, that's a different legal standard.
And the tolling starts after it's...
No.
No, or when it's submitted? Or when the first initial meeting is with the director?
The timing starts, it's tolling is something different.
I mean the time.
But the timing on an application starts when it hits the counter, applications facially complete, checks come across, a receipt is given, that's effectively day zero for the clock purposes.
I have a question on this point.
Yeah. Just to follow up, you don't think it's, it'd be beneficial for us then to start noticing then because of the days, the time starts ticking then?
Well, as it's written here, that's when the notice would, basically when the application is received, then it's a complete package, but not deemed complete, which is an operation, or that's an issue of law, then it goes up on the website.
Okay. Councilmember Wyrick?
Following up on Mayor Laura, a very important point here that he's raised. So in Section D, 10-14.04OD, there is no legal reason for, where it reads, "Public notice of applications deemed complete shall be made following procedures proposed by city manager, et cetera." There's no legal reason to change the word "complete" to "submitted."
Well, the fact that we're having this discussion suggests that there's a need for clarity, so yes, let's change that.
To "submitted."
To "submitted." Public notice of application "submitted" instead of deemed complete there would clarify this ambiguity that we've talked about.
So on Section D, on the 10-14.040.
Mayor Laura.
Yeah. Councilmember Haney, and then I'll turn it back. I know there's comments from the public.
I think, I think the public would like on every page stamped, reasonable advance notice, that you have the right to be told that this communication tower is going to be, there's a permit being submitted to the city of Ojai, and that the citizens would like to know that. I think you, I don't think you could put that enough into this, into this writing. If it's a CUP, it needs to be stated clearly, because people read these, and most of us, I'll be honest with you, most of us don't clearly understand it. So most of us are looking for clarity, and I think that's what you just said.
Mm-hmm.
So any, any instance in any aspect of this that the public needs, or can, or should, or will be notified, needs to be clearly stated. And I'd actually start with under recommendation and right under executive summary, I'd put it there. I mean, I'd start on the first page and state that one of the goals that we have is to inform the citizens of anything of this nature being placed in the city. And I would start there, and I'd be as redundant as we needed to be. If we did it on every page for 25 or 27 pages, I'd do that.
And now, I'm sorry, this is the lawyer in me, and I'm going to look to the city attorney here as well. The more you put in a repeat obligation, the more specific it becomes to a specific section. Right now, by having it in 040, as we've just modified it, it covers every application of every type that comes in. So that's the standard. Now, when you start repeating it section by section by section, you're actually making a requirement specific to the section, and it seems strange, but actually, you want for this type of purpose, a single reference that covers everything as opposed to individual references in multiple sections that would potentially seem to create different obligations for different sections.
Well, because you're attorney, I'll agree with you on that, however, is the word stipulate? What I would still like to come back to is, so we don't have it 27 times, we have it 26 times. Alls I'm trying to say is, we're trying to convey to you what the community has conveyed to us, and that's that they don't want any type of stealth action being taken place in this community, especially when it comes to cell towers.
By the change the council has just made, every application of every type, public property, right-of-way, private property, new site, colocation, colocation outside of 6409, colocation within 6409, will all be treated exactly the same, so there will be equality and notice upon the application's submission, not later.
Can I continue, or, I mean, I'm done, we're done with that, but can I bring up a couple more?
Oh, yes.
So the other question, and this might be to Mr. Howard, who has jurisdiction over the school properties in our community regarding cell towers?
Actually, I think it's probably to Mr. Kramer first, and then I can fill in the gap.
Okay.
This is an interesting area where some jurisdictions take one position and others take a different. The two positions are, number one, it's a school, we can't touch it, it's handled by the department, by the Division Estate Architect. The other position is that the exemption that takes projects away from a local jurisdiction and invests it with a state are for educational projects, and cell towers are routinely not treated as educational projects. They're commercial projects that happen to be located on school properties. I tend to take that second view, and therefore, my personal position, the position that I espouse to my clients is that it's within the scope of authority for a local jurisdiction to regulate through its zoning process a cell tower on a school. Now, state property is a different issue. If you're talking about a state university, that's different, but when you're talking about a school district, if it's a cell tower on a school district property, my clients generally take the position that it's within their zoning purview. Mr. City Attorney?
No, I completely agree. We did that in the last city.
Yeah.
Cell tower ordinance, we did, there was actually an application that came in that placed a cell tower on a school, and we took jurisdiction over that.
So the question is, is that stated anywhere in our ordinance? That we have jurisdiction over that?
We don't have to state that we have jurisdiction. We have jurisdiction because it's not an exemption. So this is just a practice issue.
One quick question to follow up on that. So if somebody were to approach the Ojai Unified School District wanting to put up a cell tower, if they submitted that directly to the state architect and did bypass us, could that be approved by the state architect?
The state architect still has to approve every structure constructed on a school property, so they're still in approval process, but a city that takes the position that they have zoning authority over a school would simply say you have built an illegal structure that happens to have been approved as to its physical construction by the state architect.
So what would happen in an instance like that? Now we have a cell tower up because the school district didn't come to the city for a permit?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we contend that it's a code enforcement matter, and they need to remove it, or they come in and apply for a permit. One way or another, we would assert our jurisdiction.
Okay.
And compel them to either remove it or come in and get a permit.
All right. Then I would suggest that whatever we do with this permit, with this ordinance, that we make sure it gets transmitted to the Ojai Valley School District so that they're fully aware of the fact that we're going to regulate anything that has to do with telecommunications towers that aren't exempted within the ordinance on their property.
And Mr. Mayor, pro tem, again, what, if that is your goal, then my recommendation to you is that the message to the school district be that the city reserves its right to zone for all, not just wireless, but all projects on schools that do not fall within the educational exemption, so that you don't, our goal here is not to pick on an industry.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's my request.
I'm going to turn it to the public, if there's no more questions from council. The first speaker, Ms. Pageling.
Mr. Mayor, before you take public testimony, may I suggest that there may be a number of people who are going to talk about the same thing, and perhaps if we could wait until we get all the public input before responding, that might be a more efficient way to do this process.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Pageling, and I wanted to just say a few words and ask you a question. You said your clients, who are your clients? I didn't quite understand, maybe you can answer me right now, but...
Well, right now, he's our special counsel to this wireless.
Okay. I just thought that you were referring to the industry being your client, so anyway, I was a little confused. I have some information here, and I don't know if it's relevant anymore, but in 1995, the then United States President Bill Clinton signed a memorandum stating that cell towers should not be placed on schools or near residential neighborhoods. So has this been superseded by the FCC now stating that they can put it anywhere they want? That's a question. In France, they've taken quite a stand, and they banned Wi-Fi in kindergartens, and in middle schools, Wi-Fi must be turned off when not in use, and we have to realize that the EMF, the radiation emitted by cell towers is similar to that emitted by cell phones and Wi-Fi routers, all of which even the World Health Organization classified as a possible human carcinogen. So we need to really, I mean, I know it's kind of beyond this point of debate, it's, they're saying they can put those cell towers anywhere they want to, but we've got to protect our children. If we can't protect ourselves, that should be one of our goals.
Thank you. Mr. Oakway?
Good evening, my name's Nicholas Oakway. I live at 3998 Grand Avenue, Ojai. I just heard from Mr. Kramer that the goal here was to not pick on the cell tower companies and builders, but aren't we here to protect the health and welfare of the people of Ojai? First, I don't think it has anything to do with picking on them, I just think it has to do with you folks putting yourselves in as strong a position as possible to protect the health and safety of your fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dewar?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was one of those who objected to the handling of the private meeting between the telecommunications officials and, I guess, staff or the special counsel. I don't object to that meeting. I think that's a great way, as you said, so it doesn't deteriorate into a debate. If you really want to get to the issue and their concerns, that's one way to do it. What I object to is being told that you have a meeting with telecommunications officials to get their input on a proposed draft ordinance, and no one on city staff took notes. Seems like kind of a odd way to handle a meeting where you're trying to get input. Then I was told that the special counsel may have taken notes, but that those were not available under the public records request that I made because that was work product. Was also told that this was the best way to address issues that could lead to potential litigation. So my contention is and has been and remains telecommunications officials receive special treatment. They were allowed to have staff's undivided attention to present their concerns which could lead to potential litigation. Now, apparently, Mr. Kramer or city staff doesn't believe that anyone in the community might have concerns that could lead to litigation, or they would have scheduled a private meeting with the community as well. So the telecommunications officials get a private meeting at which no notes were taken, and I can't get a copy, but the public had to air their concerns in public where the telecommunications officials would certainly have access to their concerns and their issues. We expect more from our government.
Thank you. Mr. Daddie?
Mayor, council, thank you. I take exception to this noise study and this noise issue. We have standards, we have studies, we have cited Star Market, which is in a very sparse neighborhood for excess noise for the roof fence. We've been up there at four o'clock in the morning citing them for the noise, and I think what we need to do before we go invent all this new stuff, let's see what we've got on the books. If we have something where we're going to cite Star Market for excess noise, we have standards, we have our code officer up there, we have our building official up there at four in the morning when it's nice and quiet and they're listening to those motors, we have the information we need now. We don't have to go through this nonsense now. If we have enough information and we have strong enough rules that we can cite our residents, we have what we need now. Next thing, PL zones, not school zones, PL zones. We have 19 PL zones. The city has absolute oversight on those zones as far as the zoning. You don't have to allow anything to go into those zones. So we have 19 of those, and I think if you're going to start... So, we have 19 of those, and I think if you're going to start just segmenting schools, you need to put that over that blanket, 19 zones. We have experienced what happened with Tim Baird, our ex superintendent here, in the Encinita school system and the problems they went through with the PL zones, and the school suing the city because the city wouldn't rezone. We've got that Encinita issue, can look on the, on the site. So, we don't, we don't really need to go through a bunch of rigmarole on that. I was here six, eight weeks ago, and I offered to go out and get another measure, Measure B, which would be the sunshine rule, which would then make it mandatory that every submission, regardless of what it was, regardless of whether it was complete, be put on the website within 24 hours of being submitted, or 48 if you like, being submitted to the city for notification, have it clearly on there. Now, if it'll help, we can go out and get the citizen to do an initiative to force that. But I think when you take a look at what the goals of this council were, and the ones you're still following, the number one goal of this council was put down by Mr. Clark and the then existing council, was restore confidence in the city council. I think there's some things you can do here tonight to adopt and make changes, to take that step forward of restoring the confidence of the people here. We've got too many people with too many issues coming too many times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Francis Smith?
Mayor Lara and members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I would like to reference something that Mr. Quilice brought up, that I think is an overarching theme that is happening over and over again across a wide variety of issues, and that is that the citizens themselves have an intelligence and an awareness of, of certain issues, and we are insisting, we are demanding that our, our concerns and our contributions be considered. So, while Mr. Clark and Mr. Kramer are taking credit for the good process that was eventually manifest in the planning commission, let me remind everyone that hasn't been able to really pay attention closely to what happened, is that there was a, a planning commission meeting called, and there was no red line copy of the changed agreement given to the commissioners. And if it had not been for members of my organization and other members of the public reminding the commission that they were not being given the proper information by city staff, it could likely have been approved. If it was not for Commissioner Rosalie Zabilla insisting that we have another meeting to allow city staff to provide the basic information that the commissioners needed to make their considerations, this could have gone through. So, I think you are hearing that the city is very concerned. The city is awakening to the reality of our city government and how broke it is. And I would like to be the first to call for a formal re-engineering effort. As it stands right now in the telecommunications ordinance, we are told that Mr. Clark is going to develop a procedure for public notice and go over it with the city council. I trust the city council. I know that you are listening to us, but I need to make you aware that we have a great deal of lack of faith at this point in our number one executive. People can pass the buck all they want, but it does land up in one person's lap, and that is our first executive, and that is our city manager. So, I appreciate the fact that after we insisted that you listened to us, after we insisted that proper paperwork be given the commission, to the commission, we appreciate the fact that you've listened to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Michael Shanahan, 901 Mercer Avenue. The last time I was here, I had to confess how disappointed I was in what I saw. And I was temporarily heartened by the planning commission's paying attention and delay so that they could fully consider all of the changes in this telecommunications ordinance. Now, I'm disappointed again, as I think has been said by a number of people, including members of the council itself. Public notice was an extremely fundamental and important issue for the citizens, the, so, the hit-the-table notice, so to speak. And so, when I saw the, the amended ordinance, I, that's right where I went, because, you know, whatever the other issues are, if we know about it far enough in advance, we can handle it. We're relatively smart people. So, when I got there, what I saw was a promise, and that was it. So, I infer that there's some reason why that requirement cannot be embedded in the ordinance, so I'm okay with that, I get that. That means it's not Mr. Kramer's responsibility anymore. That means it's staff's responsibility. That means it's Mr. Clark's responsibility. So, I would have hoped, knowing how important this issue is, and knowing the timing and the synchronicities that we need to see happen, I would have hoped that a draft proposal for a, a public notice procedure would be in front of you tonight, so that you could do a first reading and be prepared to vote on it at your next meeting. I can't imagine that it would take hours and weeks of discussion for staff to figure out how they will notify this city. We talked about a number of options the last time. The simplest one, as it has been discussed here tonight, is posting on the web. I happen to know how to do that. It takes that long. Consequently, a procedure to outline how to do that should take maybe 30 minutes to draft. I know this. I do this for a living. So, I'm very disappointed that it's not in front of you. Now, what I take from that is that someone is not anticipating the needs of this council and this city. Someone is waiting to exercise leadership, to be told to exercise leadership. So, what I am asking you tonight is to direct your city manager to exercise the initiative that I would have expected to be done spontaneously, and bring you back at a time certain, a specific proposal for hit-the-desk notification of every telecommunications application. I would ask you to give that direction tonight and to attach a date that you expect to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lobel?
Good evening, members of the council. Jeff Lobel, Ojai. First of all, thank you to Mr. Clark for sending out yesterday afternoon the revised, 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 whatever version of this ordinance, that, but I do appreciate that we had a few changes. I wish to make my comments in two parts. The first is a process part, and that is, I think you've heard, and you've certainly seen my writings and other things, that the whole process, starting December 27th, 2013, when we were given three days to object to a wireless tower at $1290 grand, flowing through to today, has been either intentionally or unintentionally sad. It's less than what the city pays for and what the citizens can expect. Improper notice, improper information provided to us, it comes up again because the quality of the work that was provided to the planning commission, when there were different versions of the wireless ordinance in the audience versus what was on the desk, how can they possibly have done their job? In fact, the only way that this got fixed was by Judy Norris, a member of the audience, saying, you know, the government codes allows you five extra days with the same notice. And the planning commission chose to take that option. Wasn't provided by the city manager, wasn't provided by the city attorney, interim city attorney, Mr. Kramer, or anybody else. So, the impression that somehow this all is wonderful is certainly not the feeling from those of us in the audience. We're feeling like we're getting pushed, and we're thinking you are too. Why should the council or the planning commission be asked to vote on something that was ridden with errors? That the memo, first memo about that was provided on January 20th, and nothing was done until February 4th at 6:00 PM? It, it just, I think we can all expect better. Secondly, and I'm running out of time, I know, but Mr. Kramer's statements with respect to the documentation are part of a very large problem in public records disclosure. I was told that Mr. Kramer would not release documents to me. I was finally given by Mr. Clark on the evening of February, excuse me, on the evening of, of January 20th, the draft proposed ordinance that was given to the industry representatives. I have no problem with the meeting, but why hide the documents? Why lie? And that's flat out what was done, because you titled it, you knew what it was, and to tell me that it's something different is just simply not true. To tell, say it again here tonight is simply not true. So, it leaves the impression that the citizens are being misled. Why is it that we're told it's attorney-client privilege, and we can't hear what went on in that meeting, yet the information was provided to Mr. Blatts in open session? Clearly, it wasn't attorney-client. The industry, as far as Mr. Kramer has said, is not his client. The city is. It's work product, if it's anything. But why not disclose it? Why hide it? This goes to the next point, I know I'm going to be out of time here, but there is no RFP out for experts to process the applications on April 10th. How are we ever going to handle the wireless industry's applications, do so in an effective and efficient manner, and implement an ordinance that I know Mr. Kramer has worked on very hard, as have many others? If you don't have the RFPs out, is Mr. Kramer's office going to be able to do it by himself? Is that what the council wants? He's very qualified, maybe that's what you want. But how are you going to effectively process this? Has Ms. Wald been asked how she's going to implement this ordinance? Is it implementable within the city of Ojai, within the structure? Because otherwise, we're all wasting our time. The wireless industry would love for the city to fail in the, in the application of this ordinance, because then they get the tower without controls. So, I'm concerned, because there is no RFP. The noise ordinance and the height ordinance could have been dealt with 10 months ago. It wasn't dependent on the FCC rules. And now, all of a sudden, we're running around saying, oh, we're going to get it done, we might get it done within the time period, but not quite. That doesn't make any sense, and I think you're being misled, and I find that very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Torres?
Good evening, Mayor Lara, council members, and I'm Jesus Torres, Director of External Affairs for Verizon. And Councilmember Blatts, thank you for that warm welcome. We are thankful for city staff to, for providing us opportunity to weigh in, and I have a new definition of special treatment. You know, we were given an outline last minute and didn't receive a full draft of the ordinance till late in the process. I've asked for meetings with some of the council members, which were rebuffed. So, if that's special treatment, then that's, that's, I don't know what to say. So, I, I echo some of the public's comments about needing some of the documents ahead of time to, to look at. And for all fairness, I think 99% of our suggestions were actually rejected from staff. And so, if that's special treatment, I don't know what is. So, I don't know what it is. But I'd just like to say that I am very lucky to work in a technology industry that is forward-looking, innovative, and provides consumers with products and services that are changing lives. And many of these, actually, many of these products and services are improving and even saving lives. In order to provide the service to our consumers, our customers, we must build the infrastructure that is needed to sustain their demand. Technology infrastructure is as important as electrical grids, roads, bridges, they move the goods of the 21st century. In fact, these traditional infrastructure projects that I just mentioned are actually being connected to wireless networks to provide cities with valuable data. Many cities are using this, and they're, they're becoming smart cities. They're using big data that, that's being conveyed from traditional public works projects. Wireless infrastructure is a foundation for innovative technology. In our classrooms, hospitals, public safety, and small businesses, and many other fields, we're having a consistent and reliable wireless experience is critical. As a matter of fact, I brought two tech entrepreneurs out here, so they can see how the sausage is made. And, you know, combined, they've helped over 80 companies start up. And technology is a critical important, component to what they do. One of them actually lives here in Ojai. These projects are critical for us, because demand is growing at an exponential rate. The device per person, that rate, is actually growing. Just think about how many mobile devices you have in your home. You know, we only had one flip phone. Now, we have a MiFi hotspot and a tablet and a cellphone. And so, these are critical devices that are using more and more data. And because of that, we need to make sure that we have a reliable network to provide for our customers. And it's just not people watching cat videos on, on, on YouTube. You know, Mr. Sher, Mr. David Kinney, you know, he, I'm sure, they use wireless tablets and phones, and he has them right in front of them. We don't want his communication on his cellphone to compete with a, a three-year-old watching a YouTube video. It's a public safety matter. It's a matter of public safety. And so, our main issue with this ordinance is that we need more flexibility to provide smaller, smarter, and strategic equipment in some residential areas, because that's where the demand is coming from. It's coming from residential areas. And we need to be, we can be smart about it. We can be strategic about it, and, and provide equipment that is aesthetically pleasing and placed in, in areas that are needed most by our customers. And so, I won't go into details, but there are some setback requirements that are excessive and won't let us allow, allow us to provide small cell technology that can be used to provide the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak on this item? There's no more speakers cards, or else I'm going to close a public hearing and return it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Kramer go through the answers? Yes. And I think some, some answers were directed towards council, so, but proceed, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Mayor, what I'll do now is just go through the comments that I think are probably directed towards me to respond to, and I'll apologize to the public if I missed catching your name as I did the first speaker, or if I botched your name, please accept my apologies in advance. The first speaker asked who my clients were, and my clients are local governments. I work for local governments around the country. I do not work for wireless carriers. So, my perspective is from local government. She also spoke to a 1995 memo from the president. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 has preempted all of that, and the court decisions that have come down, and there have been a series of them since, really set the national standard. She spoke of Wi-Fi standards in France. In the United States, we are obligated as a local government, under the Telecom Act of 1996, to follow the standards established by the FCC. That's all we're allowed to do. So, while different countries have different standards, we're obligated to follow the FCC standards, and this ordinance complies with the FCC standards. Mr. Oakway spoke about the fact that I, I said that we didn't want to pick on, on the industry, and, and that's what I said, but in the context of that I said it, we don't want to pick on, on any particular segment of this community, and I just happened to mention the industry, because that was what we were talking about. We want to treat everybody equally and give them all a fair shake in this process. Now, as Mr. Torres said, he felt that we rejected 99% of, of what they requested, it's probably pretty darn close to it, but at least we listened to what they had to say. And the reasons we rejected them, because frankly, they asked for, for privileges, not rights. And that's an important difference. So, we're, and, and let me then now switch over, because I'm going to continue on that thought. Mr. Duer, I believe is his name, spoke about the fact that the telecom industry receives special treatment. The answer is, he's dead right. They do, they do receive special treatment. That's because Congress has made that possible for the industry. It's not something that the city of Ojai does. Congress has said, as an example, through the regulations adopted by the FCC, that wireless companies come first. We, they have special shot clocks, we have to process their applications, regardless of whatever else is on the table in front of the city. Wireless effectively moves to the front. And under Section 6409, the most current regulations, we could have any sort of number of, of issues in front of us, and they'd still move to the head of the line, because that's what Congress has decided. So, he's, he's right on. We had one meeting with the industry, and we've had about four or five meetings with the public, where the public has had a chance to talk. When we're talking about the industry, we're talking about technical issues, and there are, excuse me- are, excuse me, there are identifiable, there are a small group of identifiable participants who are being regulated by the ordinance. The public is not being regulated by this ordinance. The wireless industry is. Again, another reason why you go out and you talk to them, because you want to have their input, because they're the ones who are being regulated by this, not the public. That said, we've actually allotted more time to take public comments, and you've been at the meeting, so you know which ones I'm talking about. And it's been a very good and constructive process. Mr. Shanahan spoke about the issue of why the notice requirements for posting of applications are not embedded in the ordinance. It's actually a procedural issue, and the Assistant City, interim city attorney and I spoke at some length about that issue. It's a process you don't, by putting it in here as a hard code requirement, really the worst part of that process is that we can't make changes and bring them back to you without actually modifying the ordinance. The way that this is done is essentially the city manager develops a process and brings it to you, essentially as an information item, so that you're aware of what's going on, you have your input. But this allows the city manager much more flexibility. Once we figure out what the best process is, is to implement it without coming back and reopening the ordinance. So that's why it doesn't go in the ordinance. The obligation to do it is in the ordinance. And I frankly, I think that Mr. Shanahan's right. This is a process that shouldn't take a lot of time. But the focus has been on making sure that what we're doing is not anticipating a process that you haven't approved. Presuming your approval, this is something that I assume will happen almost immediately Those are really the comments that I think are probably best directly addressed by me. And of course, I'll answer any questions you have.
I want to start out. Any council member have any questions for Mr. Kramer?
No.
Short question. I want to make sure that my understanding is correct, Mr. Kramer. In the definition of wireless communication facility, wireless facility, our facility, that includes, it's an expansive and very detailed definition, which includes, at the very end, microcell antennas and distributed antenna systems and similar systems. My understanding is that if a city, through a CUP process, allows, say, a distributed antenna system along streets or something like that, that each one of those locations then becomes a potential 6409 site?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
That's the way the FCC has interpreted. We've used the FCC's definition here, because frankly, that's what we have to use.
Okay. And then the other comment I would want to make on the sound matter is I would be very disinclined to support an ordinance that's meant to, you know, regulate the wireless industry, to in any way impose a burden on all conditional use permits for anything in our city. In other words, an additional cost for an ambient noise study to be associated with any CUP. I have a, I got a real problem with that. I'd be very disinclined to support that.
And that would be recommendation for, right?
Well, it was one of the, it was one of the options that was, I think, not recommended. And I think that, I think the point's well taken by one of the speakers, that we have a noise ordinance, and we should just make sure it's strictly enforced and applied to all, you know. Now, the last comment I want to make is with respect to the location, preferred locations, but maybe it's premature to do that.
I don't think so. I think right now, well, I think that we should go through the ordinance itself, and if we have suggestions, we should point them out.
All right. Well, then I'll wait for us to go through that procedure. Well, I just wanted to point out something I'm struggling with. When you look at the preferred locations from top to bottom.
What page?
On page, this is a section.
Mr. Mayor, this is page nine.
Yeah, in the packet, yeah. And you combine that with reading Guideline C2 on page 221, and I'll read it. "All wireless towers shall be designed and situated in a manner that utilizes existing natural or man-made features, including but not limited to topography, vegetation, buildings, or other structures, to visually conceal the wireless tower to the maximum extent possible, feasible, excuse me." And on the next page, on E1, "Preferred Locations, Facilities Should Be Located As Far From Residential Uses As Feasible," and talks about it and goes on. And I look at this list, and after the most preferred, which is the city, which is frankly, I believe often put into these ordinances, because cities want to capture lease income. And I don't think that's a goal in our city with respect to a wireless facility. And the second, parcels owned or controlled by other government entities. That's school system. I'm wondering if to be, I've just been struggling, and I brought this up with the Planning Commission, and they just kind of, you know, they said, well, you know, council will deal with this. I wonder if trying to render internal consistency here, whether we ought to look at reordering this list to primarily emphasize large, open spaces first, before we get into more closed-in spaces. And frankly, if you look at our maps, and you look at where there might be, because it's not just this preferred location, it's a matter of also willing landlords. You know, if you're trying to influence things. It's not just what our preferences are, it's where the willing landlords might interact with that to get the end that we want. And I just, I'm not sure how to, I'm struggling with this, but I'm wondering if you start out with preferences for wider open spaces like agricultural zones, golf courses, wide-open spaces, before you get into the other listings. And I have a suggested taxonomy here, but right now, I'm just raising the point in general. And I just, in my, I wonder, Mr. Kramer, is that, I believe you indicated the Planning Commission, that's perfectly within our discretion, to structure that, how we ever think it might be best to serve the citizens?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is completely at our discretion? And I just wanted to bring that to the council for discussion.
I would like to comment on that. I struggle with this too, and, but my point of view is different. Personally, I think it's important to put, being a landscape contractor, I want to, I feel like open space in agriculture should be down below, in my point of view. And I think that residential, obviously, in my opinion, belongs at the very bottom, like it is. But I just think that it's going to be, we value our open space in our agriculture zones here. We have very limited land in the city limits. So it's part of the viewshed, it's part of being here in Ojai, and that's why I'd rather have that more down on the list and have parcels owned by the city or golf course, well, golf courses, but it's more of an entertainment, open space in those areas. So I disagree with the reordering, but I don't know what my fellow council members think.
And you're okay with the owned by other government entities being second?
That I am, that I am swayed to move down the list, that I am.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
I was, you know, as lays on to the Planning Commission, they had the same discussion and the same concerns. And if you just, if you look at each one of these, every one of these has a up and a, you know, an upside and a downside. And this, I think, it was there, after probably an hour, hour and a half debate, this was their, this was their best solution to it. And when it gets to the government entities, I don't think they were looking at schools as much as they were looking at Caltrans or entities like that, not public schools, because that was a concern of theirs too. So I have no problem with the way this is written and the way it's outlined. And again, I already sat through that debate. We could put any order we want on this, and it's not going to be the best order for everyone here. This is a good order, and it works. And I think if you look at it too, as you look at the, at the bottom three, that's where the most people are. Actually, actually, from the bottom up, you're going to see from residence to open space to commercial to industrial, you're going to see that's where the greater percentages of the community lie. And I think that's why they put those at the bottom and left the other four near the top.
Mayor Protim. Blatts, do you have any comments on the order on Section B?
I don't, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I'm more concerned with the stealth location than I am what we characterize it. Obviously, if our top one would be a city-controlled property, and you put it on a city-controlled property where there's nothing around it, then a better place might be in a commercial zone where it's surrounded by trees. I think that it's the, the nature of the location is more important than the underlying ownership of it. On a golf course, I mean, what's the, I mean, golf courses are typically wide open. You're going to, you're going to see it more on a golf course than you would in a, in an area such as what's over at the Caltrans lot. The Caltrans lot is pretty well camouflaged because of the trees around it. So I would, if I had a preference, I would kind of do it in an area that not so much its use, but, you know, the, the actual characteristics and topography of the area. But I don't have a preference when you're listing it like this particularly.
And we do have to keep in mind that the telecommunications industry is going to offer these sites. So in essence, I know we put a preference of location, but it's up to the significant gap, what their study shows where it's, where the coverage is needed, that it's basically going to end up forcing us to look at different locations around that area. But if everybody's okay with this, if you don't feel like it needs to be moved, I don't, I don't feel too strongly about moving these items, but I'm okay with the way it is. Any other?
I have two comments, Mr. Mayor. The first one is, in picking up on Councilman Lyric's noise situation, I don't know why we try, we keep trying to invent the wheel when we already have a noise ordinance. If there's, if we're, what Mr. Daddy had indicated was that if we feel good enough about our noise ordinance, that we're going to cite somebody, and I know that Star Market wasn't the only one that's been cited, why do we need to change it? I think we just leave it as it is. And then the second issue is I'm really not comfortable with the notification to the public beginning at the same time that the shot clock begins. I think they should have noticed prior to that. So particularly Attachment A, page six of 24, where it talks about all permit applications shall be submitted by the applicant in person at a prior scheduled appointment. I think the minute that an application is submitted, whether it's deemed complete, whether it's just submitted for the purpose of seeing what else needs to be done to it, my preference would be the minute that that happens, the minute that anything is going to begin the process, that the public is notified as to what's going to happen. And then the public is notified each time something happens. For instance, it says that the city shall endeavor to make appointments and times available. The applicant should be prepared to discuss, propose, change, and answer questions from staff members. I think the public should be aware when we're in the middle of that process. I don't know why we, why we wouldn't think that the public should be aware of the application process from the very beginning that the city begins hearing about it and working on it, to the very end. I don't see how it can hurt notification to the public. I think it can only help by having the public involved right from the beginning. So that would be my request.
And I definitely agree with you. And I think that Councilman Lyric made the suggestion to instead of put complete application, put submit application, so it could actually, it starts before the shot clock.
Mr. Mayor?
No, but the submittal, excuse you, Mr. Kramer.
I apologize.
It's my understanding that the submittal that we were talking about, that submittal is what starts the shot clock, the notification at the same time that the shot clock begins. I would like to have the public notified before that begins.
I'll respectfully disagree, and I'll tell you why. We have a process when applicant who hasn't yet filed but is expected to can come in and at least talk with the city. But by doing a formal process of notifying the public that something has happened like that, arguably would trigger the shot clock, because we're giving public notification of an application. From a process standpoint, from a, from trying to defeat the shot clock, from operating at its earliest possible moment, and still having a chance to talk informally, this doesn't help us.
What's the difference between council finding out at a particular point, or the public finding out at a particular point? Is the shot clock going to start then, when council finds out about it?
I don't know. You know, this is, the problem is that we have a brand-new law that has no case law behind it. And frankly, I don't want to see the city of Ojai case, that creates a principle that says the shot clock starts when you give public notification of a project. Even if that project isn't formally accepted, isn't logged in, hasn't received fees, once we bring the public into it, there's an argument to be made that a project exists. And it's my preference, as your legal advisor, to advise you that I think that's not a good idea.
Okay. And I can appreciate that. I would be willing to take that risk for the purpose of getting the public information and to say that the shot clock doesn't start until we have the formal application submitted. I would be willing to take that risk. I don't know whether my colleagues would be, but I would be willing to take that risk.
Well, I'll speak for me. I'd be willing to take that risk too. And more importantly, is the citizens of Ojai would be willing to take that risk.
May I suggest, then, and I'm going to look to the city attorney for some help on this, that if there, if you want to have that notification, the information that's provided, be it somewhat of the way of a log saying, you know, a potential application was discussed but not submitted for, by whomever, whatever, that type of process. And we can include that in the noticing provision that is in the ordinance to direct the city manager to develop that standard. We can include that in that standard.
I can live with that. I just, I just feel it's so important that the public hear about these very controversial-type projects at the earliest possible moment. And I don't think waiting until we think the shot clock is going to start upon a formal application necessarily is early enough.
Understood. We'll include that in the directive or the city manager's process that'll be brought back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one more question, Mr. Lyric.
Yes, Councilmember Haney.
On the ownership transfers, is that a public notice? Is, how does that process work?
It's, it's an administrative process, so that we know who the owner of the project is. It's not normally a process that would generate a public notice.
Is it something that we should be concerned with? Is it something that we should notify the public of if one of our cell towers is being sold, or they're losing their franchise, or someone else is picking it up? Because at that moment, doesn't that new franchise or that new owner have rights to enhance that tower?
The only rights that they have are the rights that are in the per- The only rights that they have are the rights that are in the permit or under law. So that doesn't change. And in terms of this, a different owner. Wireless companies regularly transfer assets for financing purposes. We want to know who the right party is, but that's so that if we're going to go out and do an enforcement, we know who to send the notice to. That's the purpose of having a notification to us. I don't know if there's utility to the public to know that a cell tower somewhere in the city is transferred between Sprint 604 LLC and Sprint 609 LLC.
Councilmember Lyric.
Mr. Kramer, in section 10-14.080 Maintenance, Part A, page 20 of 23, when it talks about all wireless communication facilities must comply with all standards and regulations of the SEC and any other state or federal government agency with the authority to regulate wireless communication facilities, is it clear that that applies in real time as we move through the 10-year permit process if those standards change during that time period? Are only the standards in effect at the beginning of the permit period?
We specifically wrote that section because you've hit on a key point. Certain laws, certain requirements are only at the time of the granting of a permit. Certain other regulations can force a change over time. So we tried to hit all of that by the language. I'll give you the example. When we grant a permit for a site and it's constructed and later our code changes, that becomes illegal non-conforming use. And would not require a change, presumably if we changed our standards. If the FCC changes its RF safety standards, they're required to comply with that immediately because they're a federal licensee. So this language picks up both ends of that, both sides of that coin.
Okay, so we are covered in that sense?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything to prevent cities, if they're concerned with noncompliance with RF standards, to do their own audit if they wish?
We are not prohibited by the FCC from doing our own studies. And I've actually, I'm aware of some cities that have done their own. The question is who pays for it?
We'd have to pay for it.
Right.
No, I'm not. I understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a similar question to that. Is there anywhere in the ordinance that would also pick up on any key language that could potentially give the industry better... For example, the one I'm thinking of is Significant Gap. Right now, that mostly focuses on voice coverage, if I'm not mistaken. And a lot of their goal is to get demand for data. Is there anything in the ordinance that if that term gets redefined, would allow this ordinance to be able to adapt? Or we would need to do a tax amendment to redo some of our ordinance?
Your points well taken. The Significant Gap issue appears nowhere in the Telecommunications Act. The Significant Gap comes from court-made law in the Ninth Circuit, where the Ninth Circuit interpreted what's called the prohibition clause in section 703 of the Telecom Act. So to the extent that courts rule, we have to follow those. But they interpret what a section means more often than they say, "This says A, but it's really B." So it becomes an interpretational issue. And frankly, these types of decisions happen in all areas of zoning law and other parts of governmental law. We don't change our ordinance. We simply adopt the rule that's laid down by the court as how we use it within our ordinance. So that's... And I'm giving you the long answer because I think it's important for the public to hear it, so they're part of this process. But the answer is, if a court changes its interpretation of some section, it simply is more of an administrative process that doesn't normally trigger. If we had a provision that says you cannot do something, and the court says you can, then that might trigger a code, a text amendment. But it's pretty rare, actually. Mr. City Attorney?
It is indeed, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is indeed somewhat rare, although it did happen, as you might recall, in Calabasas, where the Superior Court ruled that the ordinance went too far, and we ended up having to come back and amend the ordinance.
For one section.
For one section.
One section.
That's correct.
But that was specific to that one city as well. And no other city was affected by that one court ruling.
Any further questions? No? Then I turn it back and see if anybody's prepared to do any motion or more discussion or suggestions. Or we do have some recommendations, and they have to do not only with this text amendment, but also dealing with the height, the noise standards, and then also with the noise level. And I feel that, I think that I agree with Mr. Daddy's comments in regards to the noise ordinance, that we do have, if we feel strongly enough about our noise ordinance, I think we should abide by... It's been provided in our packet, and I see that if we are using it and citing it, I think we could keep it. And I do agree with Councilmember Lyric in terms of if we're going to apply a standard that's going to have indirect effect to other CUPs and add more burden to other CUPs, I think we shouldn't adopt those standards. In terms of height limits, I think we could go on. And personally, I think that we could go on and by staff's recommendation about moving that forward. In terms of this ordinance, I don't know if anybody else has any more questions or would entertain a motion with those amendments that we suggested tonight in terms of noticing. And I think that was the only thing we really changed. I know we did direct staff that if we were to move on with this ordinance, that we would want guidelines and procedures set up before they went into effect. I think that was pretty clear, which I agree. But I don't think that needs to be in the motion.
Have a better way.
If not, then I would give it a stab if...
Well, I want to explain to the public my understanding of what our responsibility here is as council. We have a situation with the FCC that's basically put a structure on us that if we do nothing, we're absolutely not doing a service to the community. In other words, our job is to do everything we can within the statutory requirements to maximize local discretion and protect what we perceive to be the interests of the community. So therefore, while none of us really want to approve something like this, in order to fulfill our responsibility as citizens, we really need to. And we need to proceed in a timely fashion, because the FCC hasn't given us a choice. And so therefore, I think that the Planning Commission has done a good job. We've made one specific change here on putting the notice to the community at the earliest possible period that we can, according to our council. And that we're directing the city manager, I believe at the time of the second reading, to have procedures for notification that we will approve or submit, consider and approve.
I think that would be going too fast. The second reading is on March 10th.
Okay.
And that goes next week. So I'd say the 24th.
Okay, 24th. And we've already also directed that the Planning Commission and the staff in the Planning Commission expedite the height matter in terms of bringing that issue. So with all of that, it seems to me that we have very clear direction from council with respect to issues that are not part of the text amendment, but nevertheless important to the citizens. I think, I don't think we can be any more clear about it than we have been. Mr. Howard, I'm asking you, is there anything we can do to be more explicit with respect to these side issues?
Thank you, Councilmember Lyric. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have been perfectly clear. There's just one issue I want to make sure we get on the table, and that's the issue of noise. What I'm hearing from a number of council members is that there's no need to reinvent the wheel. Let's just impose our current noise standards. And I wanted to point out that if that's the view of the majority or all of you, that's already in the ordinance. Section 10-14.050 B1D7.
Correct.
At no time shall transmission equipment or any other associated equipment, et cetera.
Correct.
So we don't have to do anything.
With all that, if we feel like we've been explicit enough in terms of specific performance on the part of the city manager with respect to the side issues and with respect to the fact that a very important amendment, namely, the words deemed complete are replaced by the word submitted in 10-14.040 Part D, I am prepared to offer a motion after, you know, explaining why I think I need to make it in terms of my responsibilities as a councilperson. And let's see if we word it correctly here. I believe we're talking about the preamble on page one of 23. Ms. Dave Shore, is that correct to read into the record as a motion? The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, et cetera? I should simply stay... Okay. And then you'll include the amendment language?
Yes.
Please.
Is there a second?
I second it.
You're kind of on the...
We're on it, girl.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California repealing Title 10, Chapter 10, Article 17, Section 1712, telecommunication facility standards and amending Title 10, Chapter 14 of the Ojai Municipal Code related wireless communication facilities. Ordinance will be amended as mentioned in the meeting tonight. Lyric?
I just have one further discussion. I believe that on attachment A, page eight of 24, item 10, needs to come out.
Where are we?
Yeah.
What section?
That's the noise study?
Oh, yeah.
No, that's a different noise study.
Oh, okay.
That's not what I was bringing up regarding community-wide noise.
Okay.
That's specific to the applicant.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's my motion?
No, I don't have any further discussion.
Haney?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Blatt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And then I... So part of the... We were clear about directing staff because, in terms of coming up with the guidelines and procedures, because that doesn't need to be on the motion with the ordinance. That's correct, right?
Correct.
And also with that, could we suggest also drafting the RFP, making sure we have, because that has nothing to do with the ordinance, making sure we have the capability of processing these applications? Could we direct staff to do that at this point?
You can. You can direct staff to ensure that they either begin or have processes in place to properly analyze or properly accept and analyze applications under the wireless telecommunications ordinance.
So let me just comment on that. So we do have Mr. Kramer on contract right now. And you'll recall that when we had the AT&amp;T process, we used him for this purpose. So we do have the ability to use Mr. Kramer if an early application comes in. So I'm just pointing out, of all the things on the list to do, probably the RFP is lower on the list because of that capability. And we should really focus on the things that are more important, like getting the public notice done and that kind of thing. That would be my input.
I would agree.
You would agree?
I agree, but I have, one of the things, we talked about some type of dialogue with the school board. And I just don't want to forget that. And again, I think we should put a timetable on that too, as to when this closes within the 30- or 60-day cycle that we notify or we request Mr. Clark to have a meeting with the school board and inform them as to what this ordinance is and does and how it might affect them.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Haney, I concur with all of that. From a legal perspective, I would suggest perhaps a letter to the school board, so you go on record rather than just a conversation. And I would suggest that that all occur after the second reading. We're going to come back the next meeting for the second reading and adoption.
Would that include a formal letter to the state architect notifying them of the action?
Normally, you wouldn't send a letter to the state architect. They know what their jurisdiction is. They have jurisdiction over the construction and the plans.
Okay.
Everything on a school site.
Okay.
And then also, just on top of adding the letter to the... We're directing this to the superintendent? Or are we addressing this to the school board, the members?
I would send it to the school board or the CC to the superintendent.
Okay, great. And then also with... Because I do have some concerns over the process that are going to be in place as soon as this ordinance takes an effect in terms of processing applications. I do want to make sure that as somebody on the council that I look at all our options. I know that the RFP, because of staff's workload, isn't high in priority, but I want to make sure that we are being conscious of using our resources effectively and economically. Because I truly respect your expertise in this, but also I want to make sure that we, if we are burning with a bunch of these applications, that we are thinking ahead of the game and looking at potential other contracts. But I just, and it could be a form of a report, make sure to inform us during that process.
You know, I agree with you 100%. Mayor Laura, I think we could ask again Mr. Clark maybe to have something back to us in the second meeting of April as to what he believes the timetable for the RFP would be. That way, it's not forgotten.
And then with that, I'll still, there's still... Anybody want to take a step of motion with the height limit or...
No, it's being directed to the Planning Commission.
It's being directed... Okay, oh, great. Okay. And that said, I'm going to move on to the next item. And thank you, guys.
And just to confirm, I'm removing item number four, which was the noise ordinance, because we're going with what is on the books.
Yes. Next item, talking about the historical landmark designation for the twice-sold-tailed bookstore located at 121 East Ohio Avenue. And this is a discussion item.
So thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I think really the point of this discussion item at this point in time is to understand what your legal options are. So I've asked the city attorney to summarize the facts as he understands them and the legal options that you have going forward with this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This matter was, it's a bit interesting. This was a combination request by a property owner for historic landmark designation as well as a variance application to the Planning Commission. We received information last week that there may have been a quid pro quo involved. That is, the landowner was required to submit an application for landmarking as a condition for approval of the variance. And that was the information we received then. Based on the information at that time, there were options that were provided to the landowner. Had there been a quid pro quo, there was a very strong legal argument that the application for the landmark would have been void ab initio because of undue and inappropriate pressure, unconnected with any of the conditions for or findings for a variance. What we have since learned, and as a result of that, a couple of things happened. One, the Planning Commission, rightfully so, along with staff, made certain that there was no connection between the landmarking and the hearing before the Planning Commission. They were essentially decoupled. Number two, the landowner was given some options, one of which was to withdraw the application because of the quid pro quo. The landowner immediately reacted and withdrew their application. We have since come to learn, based upon information that we've sought out with the assistance of staff, that there may have been some misinterpretation by either the applicant or there may have been statements, certainly not from any commissioners, or there may have been statements, certainly not from any commissioners, but from a former employee, that could have led the applicant to believe that they were required to file for a landmark as a condition or as a basis, excuse me, as a basis for making a finding, one or more of the findings for variance. Based on the information we now have as we sit here today, my view and my opinion is that the manner in which that took place did not rise to an objectively reasonable interpretation that that was a quid pro quo. And as a result, I think there is a number of options that you have this evening, since this matter is on for discussion. I think one option is to accept the withdrawal and just believe that the applicant felt that they were compelled inappropriately or otherwise to file an application for landmarking. Or, based upon the information as I view it today, that you reset this matter for hearing, whether it be within a month, two months, or three months, or any other particular point in time, and move forward with the hearing on the landmarking of the property. I'd be pleased to answer any specific questions you may have or general questions you might have. But as we stand now, I believe those are the options. There's a real concern that, under the circumstances, had they been as we understood them at the time, that it was appropriate to withdraw the application. I think it was completely appropriate based upon the information we had at the time. However, under our code, once an applicant has gone through and received a recommendation from the HPC, that matter is supposed to be sent to the council for consideration. And I think that's based upon the evidence that we have now. It's, the council has the option of saying, no, we still want to set that for hearing and determine whether or not it's an appropriate site for landmarking.
Councilmember Wyerick?
I want to clarify one point. And just so everybody knows in the public that we had a discussion about this this afternoon, because I had some specific questions about it. And I want to make sure, because there is a 90-day demolition alteration moratorium in the same part of the code where it talks about the HPC nomination coming to city council for review. And I believe it's your considered opinion that the 90-day does not apply to where the council has to take up the nomination. The nomination can stand, and it's simply the demolition alteration that expires at 90 days.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wyerick, that's correct. At most, it's an implication that the council needs to take it up lest that stay, as I'm describing it, expires and some alteration occurs. But there's nothing in the code that specifically requires the council to act within that 90-day period.
Nomination is still in place.
Correct.
I'd certainly like to hear from the public, but I just want to get that procedural matter cleared.
I've got a couple of, just some issues with the way that it's called out. In our packet, it's referred to as 121 East Ojai Avenue. It's referred to 121 West Ojai Avenue. And I believe that it should be West Ojai Avenue. Yet everywhere in the staff report, it's listed as East Ojai Avenue. Again, I just wonder how we can publish something when, you know, your blueprints say West Ojai Avenue. It is West Ojai Avenue. Just knowing the location of it, I knew it was West Ojai Avenue. Yet the staff report that was prepared by one of our contract planners says East Ojai Avenue, which clearly indicates to me just one more time a lack of knowledge of our community by our contract planners.
Any other questions or comments from council? And then I'll return it. I'm going to go, I'm going to go to public soon if there's no question. Mr. Daddy, I don't have any speaker's car, so I'm just going to...
One of the things I would hope and would help, one of the things I think would help the community is when we ask the planning commission to go by the site, we ask them, have you visited the site? Have you seen the site? I've asked some of our people in CDD before. I brought up one instance about a bears. It looks like they're doing a demo there. And the answer was, what's a bears? I think before we have staff working on these, we need to have something that says, we've been to the site. We know where it is. We understand what it looks like. And that's not happening. It is absolutely not happening after all this time. You take a look at the simplest of ideas that can clarify the issues. And we clearly are missing the puzzle parts, the building blocks that make this thing much easier for everybody. I've looked at these things before and have not seen addresses. And I think that was a couple of sites ago on this. Didn't even have an address. I thought Twice Sold Tales, where is that? You know, it didn't have an actual street address. And I said, well, it's got to be Joxo Building. And so, you know, by deduction and then watching the HPC and the columns and a few other things, then I could piece it together. But that was a while ago. So, you know, addresses would help. But I think even more importantly, if we're going to have staff work on this, we need staff to know it. When it came time for the recycle center, we were talking about things like, could we put a smaller or large? We couldn't put anything. Because there was no existing permanent building that would allow a small unit for recycling ever to be put there because that was one of the two conditions without people going by the site. So they're going to have to start going by and looking at this stuff, I think, sooner or later. And I would appreciate your help. And I would appreciate a change in direction as to where this goes. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Quilisi on West Eucalyptus. With respect to the actual address of this place, the east-west dividing line in the city is Ventura Street. And the correct address is 121 East. And I did attend the planning commission meeting. I understand Mr. Howard's assistant was there, he was not. And what happened was, through some misunderstanding, the applicant had the impression that it would help with his application for other modifications to the building if he asked for a landmark designation. I don't know who that misunderstanding originated with, but that was the situation. There was no quid pro quo. It was someone's feeling that if you do this, it will help. But it will neither preclude you from doing what you want if you don't do this, nor will it ensure that you can do what you want if you do this. So I don't see any quid pro quo there. Thank you.
If the address is, in fact, East Ojai Avenue, I stand corrected, the blueprints do indicate West Ojai Avenue. And if the dividing line is Ventura Street, rather than signal, then I stand corrected and apologize.
Yes.
My name is Josh Griffin. I work for Cornstone Architects. I represent the applicant, the board. Couple of things. First off, yeah, it is misprint on the plans. It is 121 East Ojai Avenue. The dividing line is Ventura Street. That was found after the, found out after the plans were submitted. But staff recognized the error and fixed it in report, I believe. So that's the address taken care of. In terms of the process, real quickly, our firm was brought on about roughly a year ago. And before that, there have been many, many iterations of this project stretching back roughly five years plus. So this has been a very, very long project. As far as our position, we started our design process, like I said, roughly a year ago. And when we first approached planning with our proposed project, like everyone has seen it so far, everybody thought it's a great project. It was beautiful. Everything's done for the benefit of the community. The one issue is that we wanted to put this pergola, historical pergola, back into the front of this building. Since there are now setback requirements in the front setback, that pergola would have to be put into the front setback, which of course would require variance. In the meetings that we had with planning staff, we were led to believe that, and this may come down to language, but that the best and possibly only way to get the variance passed was to have a landmark designation on the building. Again, this is six months ago. I don't know the exact wording of whether they said you had to have it or if you said, you know, it was the best way to have it. Our interpretation was that we needed it in order to get our variance. It wasn't until the day of our design review that we found out that that wasn't the case. That was the first that we heard that we did not necessarily need a landmark designation. And that's when everything started happening. Our feeling right now is because this has been such a long process, starting, like I said, five-plus years ago, and just our part of it has been, you know, a year plus six months of submittals and the whole process, we'd rather just get the project done as quickly as possible so that the community can start, you know, enjoying the benefits of it. Whether we have a landmark designation or not will not change what this project will look like. We are working, you know, we've had many meetings with HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, talked about all the details. We're all in agreement about what this thing should look like. We all want to do the same thing. Our position and the position of the board, the Ojai Valley Library, Friends and Foundation, we just want to get it done as quickly as possible so we can start enjoying it. If the landmark designation is going to take two, three months more with all the public notifications, extra meetings, you know, that puts a little bit of hardship on the board to get this project done quickly.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Wyerick?
Just to clarify. So the position of the owners, the applicant, is that there is no objection to completing this project per stipulations, per design characteristics or attributes that would render it eligible for consideration of landmark status?
We have no problem.
I'm talking about the actual process of applying. I'm saying the attributes.
Yeah, we have nothing against landmark designation.
The specific attributes, okay.
As such, it's the process.
I understand.
The timeframe involved that we have the objection.
But in terms of the attributes that led to the HPC motion, which was for a miscellaneous permit, specifically talking about certain attributes, and I just want to bring that into the mix here because the staff did solicit from the HPC a miscellaneous permit by resolution HPC 14-05 that then had the designation of landmark nomination with the added condition, I'm reading the resolution, the added condition to require the applicant to apply for a work permit to be reviewed by the HPC demonstrating the details and the elements of the project are consistent with the design of the original building. I'm not here to, I'm not here to try to put, I'm here to solve a problem. I'm not here to try to stop what I think everybody wants to have happen. My only question is, this, this resolution was passed. It's on the books, okay? And I understand, and I'm kind of going to be watching over Mr. Howard here because I want to look for a solution to the problem. I think the intent is that, get this thing done. I'm going to speak very plainly here. Get it done per the attributes that would render it eligible for approval as landmark status. And Mr. Howard, can we allow this project to continue as nominated without following this resolution with respect to the work permit?
That's a problem. Because currently, the code requires that if they become landmarked, they submit an application for a building permit. It needs to be referred to the Historic Preservation Commission for determination of what the changes are going to be, what the implications would be, and the issuance of a work permit.
But I'm talking about the nomination not yet approved for landmark.
Right, well, again, I think we're probably going to the same place. And that is if it's, if we, if the council determines that they want to set this for hearing and leave a gap of four months or five months or whatever the period of time it looks like it's going to reasonably take to get construction underway and moving down the road so somebody could actually view it and determine where they're going with it, the answer is yes. That 90 days is not an inhibition to that. I would also, though, want as part of that agreement by the applicant that they are okay with that as well. I want, I would want the record to be clear that this is not a one-way street so that it doesn't come back again and say, not only six months ago was I told that I needed landmarking status for my variance, but also now I'm told that I need to wait six months.
I'm just trying to deal with the fact we have a resolution of the HPC on the books here. And I just, I just want to respect the HPC and their work and try to, I think, get to the end that we're all looking for. And that's to get it built per the attributes that would render it eligible for landmark status. I think we're all in agreement on that.
I believe so as well. On our side, all it is is the process and the timeframe.
Okay. And I would, I'm going to be a little forward here and solicit, since I see two members of the HPC here, I sure would like to hear from them as well.
Yes, of course.
Since they're here. The vice chair is here.
Yeah, just before, any other questions for the applicant?
Not for the applicant.
No, not for the applicant? Okay. Yes.
I'm Craig Walker, Vice Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And again, I just want to echo the fact that we think this is a wonderful project. When they first mentioned it to us, I was a little taken aback at how much of the original building was going to be changed out. But then when we saw their plans and what they had in mind, and especially the fact that they were going to take the important parts, which was the facade, and they were going to restore the pergola and make it a landmark, it just seemed like it was going to be a wonderful thing. And to have that downtown would just be great. The only thing that we had at the very last meeting was, as you may recall from reading the minutes, I asked, well, what are those pillars going to look like? How will we know that they look, are going to look like the pillars? Do you have a final design? And they said, no, we're still working on that. So my request was simply that they come back to us with their final design so that we could look at it and all be on the same page with it. And then that was put into the form of a work permit. I'm not sure if that work permit is actually necessary. This was the only issue we had. We'd reviewed the project. We felt the project was good. We supported it. We just wanted to have a look at those pillars to make sure that they had the same look and feel.
Yeah. And Mr. Howard, I think, you know, we have the vice chair at the podium here. I think we all know where we want to go here. This is a discussion item. We can't take any action on this tonight. But we can agendize for the next meeting. And I think what the applicant and the HPC is looking for is how can they proceed, even though we take no action tonight and in terms of waiting for the next agenda item where we, you know, the next meeting where it would be agendized for action.
I think what I would like to do is get together with the applicant's representative and the vice chair, whether it be myself or Mr. Summers, and work out essentially a stipulation that there's no way we're going to be able to avoid going back to the HPC. They've already included it in the resolution. You want to see the final plans on the pillar. So that, if we can work out a means of getting them before the HPC when they come up with their final design and essentially put their stamp, have the HPC put their stamp of approval on the plans, including the pergola and every other aspect of it, I think that might solve the problem. But I want to make sure we work with the applicant. They've got a time concern, obviously, and that's one of the things they've articulated. And I think we could probably work together very quickly to come up with something in the next few days.
The last thing we want to do is add any time to their schedule or any more expense. We'd really like to help expedite it.
That would be great. I would love to see that.
And I think we could probably put together something in the form of a joint agreement/stipulation so that we can enter on the record. And then ultimately, we'll, we'll get to where, get to where the council wants to go, the applicant and the HPC.
Yeah. Mr. Howard, I'm trying to kind of get my thought process around this. The applicant came forward to the HPC because the applicant thought that, for whatever reason, in order to get some variance that they were asking for, it was going to behoove them to be landmarked. So when it went to the HPC, was the landmark status requested and approved?
It was.
Okay. What would have happened if it had never been requested? Would it have still gone to the HPC because of the historic nature of the building? And we'd be exactly where we are now, but without the landmarking?
No, it would not have gone to the HPC.
Okay. And that's the part I'm having trouble with because this is a significant historical building. And I'm wondering why it wouldn't have gone to the HPC.
And can I just, can I...
And can I just, can I interrupt to add that we do often see buildings that aren't landmarked, that come before us, that are just historically significant, and we are asked to comment on them and send those comments to the planning commission?
But that's only, that's not a requirement?
That's correct.
That's voluntary?
It has to be landmarked or a, what is it, historic merit, I think is the phrase, but I have to go back and look at the code to be precise. But otherwise, it's true the planning commission may ask that the Historic Preservation Commission weigh in and provide information and advice, but as I understand it, that would be something that wouldn't be triggered by the landmarks law that we have.
Can I follow up on this? Along with that, there's a permit process through the Historical Preservation Commission, right?
Yes.
Was that permit already applied for, and was it approved?
My understanding is the only thing that was approved was the landmark, was a recommendation to the council to grant it landmark status, the, what they call a work permit, to actually perform alterations, et cetera. That was not considered or approved.
And then the second thing is, I know there's a recommendation here. Is there another way of going about this? Is there a way that we can remove their request to HPC? Is that the right, am I phrasing it right?
Well, I'm not sure.
Well, it seems like we have a recommendation as to what staff would like to see done, but is there another option here?
I think the recommendation is from the HPC. The recommendation you had before you was a resolution adopted by the Historic Preservation Commission to grant it landmark status.
And I think Mr. Howard laid out a possible way to facilitate this, by getting all parties together.
Without bending the code too much. I mean, that's one of the concerns, is that you've got a code that has a process. We want to follow that process. On one hand, on the other hand, it appears that, given the unique circumstances of this case, basically how it kind of fell apart the day before the planning commission hearing on the design, and then how it culminated into where we are today, it makes some sense to have a condensed procedure that satisfies the council, the applicant, and Historic Preservation Commission. But it would still have to follow the code in that, particularly in terms of how it's landmarked, because the code provides, the HPC provides you with a recommendation for landmarking, and then the council then will pass on that. And from what I'm hearing is that you're looking for a way to kind of satisfy all parties.
I guess what I'm looking for is the applicant wanted to pull his request to be, what's the word I'm looking for?
Landmark.
To be landmarked. And what I'm saying is, do we have that, do we have that within the city council to deny or to say yes to that request?
You do, and I think that was one of the options I gave you. You can just accept their withdrawal, and basically what you'd be doing, at least implicitly, is saying, "Well, we're not going to landmark you now, so we're just not going to agree with it."
And then in turn, what I've heard is they're also working in conjunction with the HPC right now, which they've been working with them all the way through this process, so they're already on board, so it seems to me that they could come back in six months or when the building's renovated and reapply. Am I correct in that assumption?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Haney, yes, with a but. And that but is, and again, I'm not judging this, and I'm not, this is not trying to drive policy, the one but is, if you accept their withdrawal, they then have to go back, and there's no guarantee that they will. They're under no obligation to go back to the HPC and reapply for landmarking status.
Just one more thing, just one more follow-up. I thought the HPC went two ways. I thought that one could request to be, and that the HPC could actually go to a site and make a recommendation to the city council that we would like to do that. I thought that was a two-way street.
There is a provision in the code that does allow someone other than the property owner to request landmark status. I am currently researching whether one, your prior city attorney, gave an opinion on whether or not requests for landmarking status required the property owner's consent. Number one, I'm trying to locate that, and if I find it, I'm going to analyze it. If I can't find it, my recommendation is that we analyze that because that's a foundational threshold issue, of whether or not a third party can request nomination. Your code says they can.
Right.
Your code says they can, and so you're correct, but there's, there was some question of whether or not there's been legal advice in the past.
Thank you.
If we approve their request to not have the property landmarked, if the planning commission has the authority to make the applicant go back before HPC for review and what it says they have to do now, can we stipulate to that as well, that they have to go back?
If you deny the landmarking, I'm not sure what the purpose would be going back to the, what you don't want to do is essentially treat them like a landmark property when they're not. Again, this is somewhat of a unique situation, given what happened last week.
But if it came before the planning commission...
If they're willing to do that, I think that if the applicant was willing to agree to that, there'd be no problem.
But can't the planning commission require it?
They could require it if there's something that they have jurisdiction over. They have already approved the variance for the zero setback and for the parking, so I'm not sure what jurisdiction remains.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yeah, I want to come back to the offer we have here from the city attorney. I think that he understands the situation with the code, the unique circumstances. We have a discussion item here. He's offering to come up with maybe, you know, what a good city attorney should do, a solution for us that satisfies, I think, all the respective parties. And I would just say, I would just like to just, us close and wait for, have it with the direction that it'd be, we wait for that report at the next meeting, it's be agendized for action, and then we take it up then.
And that would be in their public hearing, right?
Yeah, hopefully, this matter was actually, this was publicly noticed. We've changed the agenda, so we actually can continue the public hearing tonight, specifically to that date certain for the next meeting, so we don't have to renotice it.
I would like to do that, yeah.
And so that'll solve one problem, and that's the noticing constraint the city clerk has, and that'll solve one. And then between now and next week, the plan would be to get together with the applicant and the, I really appreciate the, I think we can do it with the applicant, but I want, I really do appreciate and want the vice chair, the chair of the HPC to be involved in that communication, and then I think jointly we can probably, we can work something out, get a report back to this council.
That would be my preference as well. I'm just, I just don't want all of a sudden this to somehow move forward without HPC involvement.
And that would be the goal in having this meeting and getting back to you with a report.
All right. I'll make a move.
There was one more speaker?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you very much. I took Mr. Clark's advice from when he worked in Avalon. I was watching the meeting on TV, waiting for this item to come up, so. He used to say in Avalon, they had a bar nearby, and the folks would be there when the item came up that they were interested in, they'd dash over. Well, the library is an area that I have been interested in. I don't have time to give you the history, but probably it started about 2006. Now, the Friends have worked very hard to build this meeting room. They worked very hard with the county because the actual library building is owned by the county, and I cannot tell you the obstacles that were put up and the costs that they suggested to put on the meeting room. That said, the whole reason the Van Dyke building was built, was bought, and it was bought in 2007, I would say, at a huge cost, $900,000, which was raised easily because our public wants an expanded library. I think if the Van Dykes had, well, two years later, they probably would have gotten half of that money. So we paid a lot for that building, knowing full well that the facade would stay the same and that the pergola would be added. I can show you plans that were drawn by Mark Whitman, that were done gratis, which includes the facade of the building. The fact that at this late hour, whatever has been told to the Friends or told to the HPC that is slowing this process down is so unacceptable. Do whatever you can to make this a win-win situation. And for the Friends, the win-win is that they are not confronted with more paperwork. Now, expenses, it's my understanding that any expenses that the Friends have in putting up our library, meeting room, were going to be waived. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Yes, we waived the costs associated with processing the application.
So any expenses associated with this or paperwork, I assume, will be waived also. Is that a reasonable assumption?
That was the council action.
Okay. So let's work very hard so that the Friends are not burdened by that, the HPC fulfills their function of restoring what was a beautiful pergola to the outside of the building. I all recommend, if you've never really looked at the tiles and the work on the front of that building, take a look. It's beautiful. The rest of the building, forget it. The reason the $900,000 was spent was to get the land that's behind the Van Dyke property that was owned by the Van Dykes. It goes back and it makes that L. That's where the true expansion of the library will go. The meeting room is absolutely necessary. Do whatever you can to make this a win-win situation. Our citizens need it. Nobody is profiting from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Yes.
John Lambert. I'm privileged to have been president of the Friends for quite a while now, and have been somewhat intimately involved in trying to get this thing done over the last almost six years. The Friends group have always considered this a historic building. It's over 90 years old. How can it not? It sits in the middle of the downtown part of Ojai. It's so integrally involved with the Arbolata. There's too many reasons for it not to be. We have a display on the inside of the building talking about its history. So the fact that it's a historic building is a fact. The fact of whether or not it's so designated officially is what we have suddenly found ourselves falling into a lot of different cracks. I appreciate Carol's comments. We actually paid a little less than $400,000, but that was a lot of money to raise from the public, because, as I say, 501(c)(3).
It's only $400,000.
Yeah. But, you know, we deal with public money, and we're very careful with how we spend it. We saw this building initially as a property that's contiguous to the library, and the library has to be rebuilt at some time. That's what it was for. The fact that we ended up owning it is a circumstance that is very hard to figure out sometimes because we were not landlords. We didn't ever expect to own something like that. It's been very good for us because the revenue from that allows us to run all the different programs that we do in the three libraries of the county. But it is a historic building. We recognize that. We said to the HPC when we met with them on our initial proposal to build onto the library, that we were more than willing to create a plaque and put it up outside on our own expense because it is. So it's becoming a designated historic building is something we have absolutely no problem with. The only problem we have is falling in the cracks and continuing this thing. We have a kind of a pool going in, our little board of directors, of which one of us is going to be in the wheelchair when we break ground. We have no problem meeting with Mr. Howard or anyone else to create a process that we can move forward quickly and get this thing moving, because we are all in agreement about the same thing. So I just would like to say, we appreciate your problem, which is a structural procedural one, as you appreciate ours in terms of the time we've spent, the effort we've put in, and the fact that we want this to be here for the city of Ojai, and we'll make it happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Yes, Joe?
I think because this seems to be a case study, and it seems to be reaching a positive outcome, maybe next month, even though it took to get the vehicle from Miners Oaks to Ojai, it took going to Tennessee and Kansas and Florida and all these other places, it might be a way for you to remove all the pieces, analyze the process, and go, "What went wrong? Why did it take us going like this to get to the same spot instead of going from here to here?", and then creating a model for future projects.
Anybody else wanting to speak? Yes, Mr. Quilisi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if it's legal, but I would ask that you ask of the city attorney, what happens if you deny landmark status without prejudice and allow the applicants to come back later and reapply and go through whatever process? You've already waived the application fees and other permit fees and such as that, but from what I've heard, my impression is that if this landmark status issue is out of the way at the moment, whether by denying it or some other subterfuge, we'll say, that these people can get started on their construction. I also find it a little bit ironic that we're talking about putting landmark status on a piece of new construction that looks like an old piece of construction. Does that irony resonate with anyone else? Thank you.
Anybody else wanting to speak? No? I'm going to turn it back to council, or, oh, Councilmember Wyrick.
Yeah, first of all, believe me, that was part of our discussion this afternoon about how to get these codes straightened out, to work together, believe me. Point well taken. And on the issue of taking any action tonight, I think, you know, it was changed to a discussion item, so the best we can do is to provide direction. And I think that the best way to provide direction is to make a motion to, taking Mr. Howard's suggestion, make a motion to continue the public hearing until the next council meeting.
Specifically, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you were looking for a motion, it would be to continue the public hearing scheduled for historic landmark designation for the Twice Sold Tales bookstore, continue it to March 10th on or after 7:00 p.m. without further public notice.
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Haney?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Aye.
Latt?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
With regard to direction, I'm, what I've heard, I believe I have direction for either myself or Mr. Summers to meet with, whether it's Mr. Walker or the chair of the commission, and the applicant, or the applicant's representative as soon as possible, to work on a process that will provide them with the least amount of impediment to their goals, to getting this construction started, and getting this historic structure back before the council for consideration for landmark status.
That's stated exactly as we would need it, I think. And again, I apologize to staff for the issue of the address.
Moving on to the next item, item number five, proposed revisions to city second dwelling compliance program.
Number four? We haven't done number four yet.
Yeah, I want to make just a point of inquiry on this, a point of order. I have before me the city website on my iPad. When you punch "item four moratorium on fence installation in Arbolata," one gets the report on historic landmark designation for the Twice Sold Tales bookstore. So the public, in other words, doesn't have this document on the website prior to the meeting. I just want to point that out, and that's going to condition anything I say.
Actually, I went on the website earlier this week, or late last week, and looked up another agenda, and it did the same thing. It pulled up an item beforehand, so it is happening a lot more frequently. And I actually did that, too. Moving on to the item number four.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that just raises a question I need to ask to the clerk. I think I know the answer, but I still want to make sure it's accurate. I'm assuming the agenda with all of the items was posted on the city's website as required by law. Okay, thank you.
Item number four, discussion placing a moratorium on fence installation for the area known as Arbolata.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Ms. Wald will be making this presentation.
Good evening. Before you tonight is discussion of a moratorium on fenced installations for the area known as the Arbolata. We know that recently, in January, at a city council meeting, there was a member of the public that requested the city council look into the issue of fencing within this neighborhood. City council then directed staff to return with this discussion item regarding adopting a moratorium for the installation of fencing. I would like to note that it has been a goal of the city to move away from general zoning requirements, excuse me, including fencing, sidewalks, et cetera, and towards zoning regulations which reflect the aesthetics and physical... which reflect the aesthetics and physical development of each specific neighborhood within the city of Ojai. The city has begun this process known as neighborhood planning, and while this is a multi-phase process, the first phase is looking at this very issue. I'd like to point out that we have had neighborhood interviews with the neighborhood planning consultant, and those have taken place. We have some results back, so the process has begun. Just make you aware of that process as sort of a parallel track to this. Implementation of the neighborhood planning concepts and design features that come through what they call a toolbox will be implemented through the municipal code, such as a text amendment. And so those efforts will take additional time, and therefore, the consideration is whether or not you want to work with an urgency interim moratorium. And as you know, in the staff report, it says the legal parameters of moratorium, such as, you know, the effective date, the first one is 45 days from the adoption, and it must be approved by a four-fifth vote of the council, and then the government code provides for a maximum of two extensions after that first period. The first one would be for 10 months and 15 days, and then if needed, for a final period of one year for an aggregate of two years. It can be ended at any time by a majority of the council. So we'd just like to point out that we provided in your packet, the city of Ojai has a series of neighborhoods that have been identified in previous planning efforts they've done. In particular, the tree committee established these neighborhoods. They have a neighborhood in here called the Arbolata. We provide that for just a basis of where you want to go with the parameters of where you want to even consider a moratorium. There's some talk of maybe including Foothill because only part of Foothill is in the Arbolata, the actual technical quote-unquote definition of the neighborhood, or maybe you want to expand it into some of the other adjoining neighborhoods that have similar characteristics. And that is, as we noted, that the characteristics of the, or as I noted in staff report, the area of the Arbolata is characterized by winding lanes and large area of coastal live oak woodland, no sidewalks or parkways, and no street plantings, street tree plantings. And so the installation of fences within that kind of aesthetic is, you know, in direct conflict with that kind of open, rambling, you know, feel that they have in the neighborhood, and that's why I think we've received a lot of complaints laid of this kind of walled-in, fenced-in look. And with that, we'd just like you to consider, one, the parameters, first, excuse me, whether or not a moratorium is needed, and then what parameters you want staff to work on as far as what streets and what neighborhoods you'd like to see that moratorium in. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Any questions from council to staff? Councilmember Eric?
I will after hearing from the public.
Okay. Anybody else? No. I do have just a really quick comment, and talking about the goal of the city, I think it's important that if we are moving away from general zoning requirements to more reflect the aesthetics and physical development of each specific neighborhoods, in my point of view, it makes sense to then look at the whole neighborhoods, in my point of view, than just on a specific neighborhood, because I think that we just start getting into the muddy situation of being able to identify what's good. It just doesn't look at the overall picture, but those are my comments just to start off with. And I'll start with Bob, Mr. Daddy.
Hey, I've got a great new giant fence right next to me, and we have a tree issue. And the tree issue is construction material under a tree. So while you don't need a tree, you don't need a permit for a six-foot fence, finally, we got that through to this city, maybe we should have a permit for every fence. Maybe you don't have to charge for the permit, but you can certainly make sure it clears what it should clear. It clears the setback, it clears the front heights, and then it clears the fact that it's not being put in under a row of trees under the drip lines, because that happens all the time. So maybe we do need a fence permit for everything, just not a fee if it falls within it. But then that way you can at least control that it doesn't violate all these other aspects, and then you don't have to go back afterwards and do the code enforcement, because that's what they're going to have to do across the street from me now and around the corner and a half a dozen other places, because I'm going to bring them all in. Because we can't enforce just my next-door neighbor that moved in with a group home and not enforce the person on the other side that did the exact same thing two weeks later. So I think you need to sit back and take a look at this thing and see what's happening because we're going to run into a lot of collisions and a lot of hard knocks with people. We've got corner issues that have got limited height restrictions, and that's not being followed. That's a three-foot. So maybe what we need to do is everybody notice, everybody gets a fence permit, then they understand what they can't do and they understand what's safe. But again, you don't have to charge them, just make sure everybody understands. That's the simplest thing. We have people put a lot of money into these things, and then they have to take them down. And I think we should find a kinder way to prevent that, that type of activity. Thank you. Oh, the other thing, too, is in Ojai's limits here, for the purpose of Ojai, horses are not draft farm animals, they're pets. And for the purpose of Ojai, everybody with 15,000 square foot gets one of those giant pets. So when you go to the 40-plus-thousand-square-feet lots in the Arbolata, you're going to find they can have three big, giant, full-size horses. So when you take that in consideration, you've got to take into consideration how you're going to restrain these guys, because I've got a bunch at the end of my street, and they've been through the house and in the back of the house and around by the pool and around by the other side. They have a way of getting out, and that's just the way it is. So when you go with this fence thing, I'm not for or against it. I mean, we have designated bridle paths that we need to pull the trees back out of there. We didn't take, we didn't take the time to read that we have a 13-foot easement that goes from Signal to Thatcher School, and the tree committee planted trees within that easement. So before we come up with any more unenforceable rules and other things, let's make sure we do it slow and we do it right. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments? This item, yes. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I would support this moratorium because I think there's a lot of issues that need to be looked at. One of the things that we've noticed on the HPC is that most of our historic homes, our landmark homes, are located on Foothill and in the Arbolata, and the context of those homes is the open rustic look that Kathleen mentioned where Mr. Libby envisioned this park-like environment for these homes to be in. And many of these landowners who own these homes or have purchased these landmark homes now are building these huge fences around them, and these people are getting Mills Act status, which is a considerable tax benefit to maintain these homes for the public benefit. And to build these huge walls in violation of the whole nature of the neighborhood where the public can't even see the home if they went to drive by it is really, I think, a violation of the whole purpose of the Mills Act. So I would hope that you would include somewhere that any landmarked home would have to get a work permit from the HPC to build a wall or a fence around it so that we can look at it and see if it fits in with the Arbolata, fits in with the environment, and allows the public to enjoy these landmarks that they're paying for basically with a tax benefit. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Lauren Sims. I am wondering, isn't half the Arbolata in the county or a good portion of it?
Yes.
So how are you going to deal with that? Just a question.
I would assume that the moratorium only, only, if I could figure out there, only applies exactly to city limits.
Isn't that going to look funny?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good point. Anybody else from the public wanting to speak on this item?
In the...
It is a discussion item, so I'll turn it back.
Right, it's a discussion item, and I just want to throw more points to the discussion in addition to the really good points that we just heard from the citizens. You know, we don't have a fence problem limited to the Arbolata, or a wall problem limited to the Arbolata. We've got a problem with how we define fronts, frontages, all right? That's what 1105 was all about, all right? We have all, many people, I have received, you know, we've had people come before us here, not just on 1105, but on other properties around the city, where because of the way the code is defined, namely that the three-foot maximum limit is only front, that we can then, if you say you have a corner lot, what's defined is front, no matter how much narrow is the three-foot, and then you turn the corner and you can go six-foot, all without a permit. And if we're talking about the look and feel of what we want in terms of our community standards in this city, I would submit that we got an issue with the code throughout the city. And for example, I think, you know, one argument is that this front setback, rear and side setback issue is a matter that needs attention. Maybe we need to be looking at defining setbacks with respect to rightaways rather than just what front is so that we don't have this, you know, people getting a feel of being between two six-foot walls, like being in a tunnel, that's not what we want, I don't think, in this community, just because it happens to be that's the side of two corner lots. So we've got a lot of issues here, and frankly, I don't think it's limited to the Arbolata. Excellent point about, you know, the difference that Ms. Sims just raised between intent and consequence. You might have a good intention here, and I share Mr. Walker's concern, but I'm very concerned about a moratorium causing a lot of problems unless it's really thought through carefully with the community. In the Arbolata, we have disparate impacts between people in the same neighborhood, and we have an issue of a demonstrated problem with respect to defining frontages throughout the community. I don't know how to get to a direction out of all of that, but I'm very disinclined to do this specific recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, my thought is I don't know why we're limiting it to the Arbolata. While we realize that the Arbolata has a historic nature to it, and there could be things that are being done in the Arbolata that are of concern to us, I tend to think if we're going to do a moratorium on fence installation, let's do it throughout the entire city and then evaluate exactly how we're going to deal with the things that were just raised by Councilman Wyrick. You know, I can think over the course of the last year of three or four situations with fences, and other than, maybe five, other than one, they weren't in the Arbolata, they came before the council. And they all were problematic. So my thoughts on it is I think we should take a step back and take a look at the fence issue, listen to the issues that have been raised by the public, and put a moratorium citywide in place.
Councilmember Haney.
Well, actually, that's what I put on mind. Why is it just the Arbolata? Why aren't we looking at the entire city? And then when we're looking at fencing, there's a multitude of types. There's six-foot, there's three-foot, there's dry stack, there's CMU, veneered in stone. There's a multitude of fences that are built around here. When I first moved here and I looked at all the rockwork, obviously, I was fascinated by it, by the fact that it was built improperly but stood forever. So fences in this community have been going on, have been built randomly for many, many, many years. So again, I think it's time that we look at it. I also have concerns, again, with dry stack walls or just people deciding that they could put 30 rocks together in their front yard and put it anywhere they want. You know, whether it's in the root zone of a historical oak or a sycamore, this is just, it's willy-nilly, and I think we need to bring it in and let the citizens be a part of the debate. Let them make their rules so that they can enforce them.
And I definitely agree with that.
And I agree completely with that, and I'll just add one more little wrinkle. Table 3-3, section 10-2.805, fences, walls, hedges, and screening. Table 3-3 is maximum height of fences, walls, and hedges. And, you know, and how many hedges do you know on frontages that are more than three feet? The point, I mean, we've got a big problem, and it's citywide, and I think we all agree.
And I think it was even mentioned before in time that when we were talking about neighborhood planning, that fences, frontage issues would be implemented in this planning process. So I think it was, I was under the understanding that we were going to look at fences anyways. Ms. Sims does bring a great point, how are we going to deal with half of the Arbolata? And I think it would be very smart for us to reach out to our supervisor and see if we could include or include the other half, because it is going to present some issues to the Arbolata in particular. I can't think of any other neighborhood in the city that that's the case. I mean, looking at our map that was provided from the Community Forest Management Plan, the Arbolata just seems the unique neighborhood. And I think that, I think that's clear direction from council, I think, to staff on what we should do, unless somebody else has any other input. Now...
Any questions?
Joe.
You know, I know there's been a lot of real estate changing hands with the economy the last few years in there, and are these people moving in? Has there been a discussion of why are you building a fence? I mean, I can see an agricultural where you're enclosing horses, zoned area or something in for safety. And is there an aesthetic discussion of, you know, stone versus, and why? I mean, is it a traffic block? I think we're talking about that area you go through to Miners, you turn, and that big screen, is that one of them? Right? Has there been a, so my concern is this going to end up like the inner city? And, you know, there's a fear thing. You put bars on the windows and it breeds fear. Are these people moving up here and going, I got to put walls up, I'm afraid of everybody, you know? So you've got aesthetics, and then is there a real reason to put a fence up? So...
And maybe that should go on the permit process.
Yeah. And I think it was, that's a good valid point. I mean, that's a little bit, I think that we've got two issues here. One is just the looking at fences and the aesthetic side, and then the other issue is if we do agree, how are we going to process, how are we going to educate people of what the rules are?
Yeah, and I think the way the fencing is set up, you have it set up so backyard fencing is appropriate because there are irresponsible pet owners. You don't have the correct fencing, their animals get out, they get hit, they bite people. So it's pretty obvious reasons to have fencing, but to wall it off, no.
Any other comments?
Just that when we look at this, if we're going to give staff direction, is a citywide moratorium that it's not only going to consider fences, it's going to be fences, walls, and hedges.
The whole coat.
The whole thing.
I agree.
Okay. We just made it with one minute to spare.
And we are moving on to the next item, and we're going to have to table the following item, which is the training for commissioners, board members, and council members, staff, because it is almost 10:30. We have 60 seconds to introduce a new item. Next item is the proposed revisions to city second dwelling compliance program guidelines based on version three dated November 19, 2014, related to implementation of the second dwelling unit compliance program of the 2014 to 2021 housing element of the Ojai general plan.
And again, Ms. Wald will make this presentation.
Thank you for the introduction. So tonight before you, you have a review and discussion of the proposed changes to the city's second dwelling compliance program. As I stated in the staff report, this is the culmination of approximately a year-long process between both the Planning Commission and the Building Appeals Board. They're up... Their update to the program was to make the program more user-friendly by removing unnecessary obstacles, providing a clear process, new forms, and a simplified application. The modifications included the new application, new modified zoning standards, new eligible dwelling criteria, a delineated process between building and planning requirements, and how it's processed through the Community Development Department, a new housing standards checklist, new in-service date criteria, an in-service date affidavit, and a zoning conformance certificate, certification, excuse me, and inclusion of the Building Appeal and Code Interpretation Procedures. So, this, this compliance program is found within the City's zoning ordinance, and is a program that came out of the City's housing, housing element, adopted in October 2012. So as such, it has come before, I think, the City Council twice, once the original, and I think it's been revised once prior to this revision. So and it's, staff would like to point out that the current program, as it's, as it is, exists right now, we've had five people actually use the program, so there has been a lot of criticism of it just not being applicable to a number, a number of the units, or at least not reaching out or addressing the issues that the majority of these non-permitted second dwelling units have within the city of Ojai. So the way we, the way that staff sat to work this, or put the program together when we were having the Planning Commission look at this new program, and the Babs, the Building Appeals Board look at it, is we just had the Building Appeals Board look at the building issues, and the Planning Commission look at the planning issues, and both bodies agreed with that procedure. So we divided it right down the middle, and that way, and then we brought it back before you, for the City Council, you know, aggregated them back together. So with that, we developed this housing standard checklist, we went through it point by point with the Building Appeals Board. Both of the bodies had a say in the in-service date, the in-service date affidavit, including, we had input from Joe Fletcher, was the city attorney at the time. I've made available for you the Building Appeals minutes and the Planning Commission minutes from their last meeting they had. I'd just like to point out, I know that the Chair of the Building Appeals Board spoke in public comment about it today, and just like to point out that on attachment C, page three or four, that the motion that they had was Board Chair Wirick moved to finalize the Building Appeals Board recommendations on the 2014 draft Second Dwelling Compliance Program, and recommended the Planning Commission approval to the City Council. And I think at some point, that was the way that it was, the motion was forwarded, at least that was my understanding, and if there's something more that the Board would like to have look at again, staff would be glad to take it back to them, but we were under the impression that that was a finalized, from the Board of Appeals. And with that, taking, we, we set these meetings in a series where they took action first, we took their action to the Planning Commission, aggregated it together, and then brought it to you. So we're happy to go back through if anybody needs more additional information, or there's corrections, or something that's still outstanding. And then I would like to point out that once this is adopted, at some point, when City Council adopts this new compliance program, we will be doing a handout of some sorts, you know, maybe a trifold or something like that, to have people walk through the process with them. But we want to make sure it's all finalized before we actually do that last element of the compliance program. And with that, I'm open to any questions, or you may have.
Just going back to your procedures, and so you said you first went and asked the Buildings Appeals Board to comment on issues just relating to the building code. And then you took that information and took it to Planning Commission, or did you take? Because I thought they were just going to focus on zoning, and.
Okay, so, so again, and I guess maybe this might just be a procedural thing, it's just that when the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to you, because that's kind of, we, we kind of, we did separate, planning did not have any comments on the Building Appeals portion of it, they didn't change anything that they made a recommendation. But I believe, it's been a while now, so you know, I'd have to check my notes, but I believe we aggregated it together, they saw the whole thing, and then from there, it comes up to you. Because it is being proposed as a text amendment, there are, there were changes to some dates that were actually codified into the zoning ordinance. So based on that procedure, we would normally have it come all the way through the Planning Commission to City Council, just kind of standard practice of how you would do those types of code, text amendments.
Okay, so after you took it to the Planning Commission, you didn't come back to the Planning Commission for those, to review those revisions?
To the Building Appeals?
Or the Buildings Appeal, or the Planning Commission?
No, because the Building Appeals Board, as far as staff is concerned, and like I said, I apologize, there's some kind of misunderstanding, but, you know, the minutes reflected that they finalized it, and so they're, they were done with their issues. We had the city attorney, the last meeting we had with them, we had the city attorney there with them, and I, I think that I was there, and the city attorney was there, because there were issues, there were going to be, we anticipated issues having to do with the housing issues. But it ended up that there were very little, and so we just moved that through to the Planning Commission, but they didn't, but we were very clear because of how we had all agreed to, you know, both boards had agreed to separate the issues, that they were very clear that they, that when they would bring up something that was not within their parameters, I would just say to them, oh, that's a building item, that's not up for your review.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from council, staff?
I, I just have one general question. Throughout the ordinance, it, it talks about termination date. What is the termination date that's proposed, doesn't give a date?
What page is that?
It's on several pages, but.
I think, you know, my understanding, my understanding was that, that I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I actually would say to you that, that my understanding was that for those, the housing that it was to apply to, that that thing, that the ordinance was written in such a way as it would be any unit that was built up until the time it was adopted, this was adopted. As far as when the program would terminate, I believe that they didn't see, I believe it was decided that it wouldn't terminate. That was my understanding, was that it was just going to go on, but I could be wrong, I'm, I'm disappointed, I don't know.
Would, would that language be under timing? For example, on one of the areas, 5-10, under timing, it says, "Application filed after this date are deemed complete," or, let's see, no, "Before the application must be received by the, the city and deemed complete on or before the termination date of the program as determined by council."
Right, that's right. Yeah, and I think the idea, the idea is that, that rather than have, as I recall, and rather than have a specific date that then it passed, and then we have to extend it, and then extend it again, which is what's been happening, you've had a terminate, termination date, and then you had to extend it, that that would be left up to council to determine when they just would terminate the program, based on performance of the program, and what, you know, feedback we got. Because obviously, the first reiteration of this didn't really work, we didn't get that many, and we only got five. But rather than, I think the last time you had a termination date, you had to extend it, because it just, we just didn't get enough. So I think the idea was to leave it open until such time it's terminated.
I just have a couple of things. There's two things that concern me about the, the ordinance as it's proposed. The first one is that I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to make it more difficult for an applicant who's doing new construction to make it a lot more difficult than somebody that's part of this program. I just think that's inherently unfair. The other thing is, and I'm just saying this for, for the council when we decide on a termination date, I think it's really important that, that a termination date is stated, and it's, and it's adhered to, because we are extending an olive branch to people to come in and be able to work with us to legalize their, their units. And after that termination date, as far as I'm concerned, we need to start code enforcing the illegal units. And the city has been very kind in not using the information that it has to do code enforcement now, because we know which, we know which units that are not permitted by us that have paid the sanitation district fee, and hadn't come to us to be legalized. The sanitation district fee is somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. If they don't pay that, they don't have sewage. We can go in, piggyback on them after the people have paid that fee, and say, okay, now it's time to come legal with us, or we're going to shut you down, and they've already paid the fee to the sanitation district. So somehow, we have to get the urgency into the public that that's what's going to happen, because we can't allow the illegal units to be in Ojai, yet I don't particularly want to see, as one file swoop, we all of a sudden take all these low-income rentals out of our inventory. But that's eventually going to happen. So somehow, we've got to get the sense of urgency implanted into this ordinance, that if that, if, if somebody doesn't come forward now, that that's what's going to happen. Because this, they, they're not going, coming to us and legalizing through the city, even though they may somehow come up with the money to pay for the sanitation district. And that's just the way it is.
And, and I thought we did have a termination day, the, the second time that we extended it. And, and I, I remember, then, then that was the same argument then, that we needed to put a date to it so that we could incentivize the people that had these units to come and use these, this program, I agree. Councilmember Haney.
I think the goal here is to modify people's behavior, and to do it in a way that, that it's a win-win for all of us. I think that's, that should be a stated goal. So we had a second dwelling ordinance that was not successful, we had five people sign up for it. What's the, Kathleen, what's, what's the, because it was before you. What's the difference between the past ordinance and the new one? What's going to, what's going to change the people's minds and bring them to the table? That, that'd be the first question. The, the second question is, if we do know, if we do know, through the sanitation district, fifty to fifty-two people already who have, who have been notified that their sewer hookup is, is, that they need to pay a new sewer hookup fee, have we contacted any of those folks as of yet? And, and, and through contacting them, what was their response to us? So that'd be the second question. And then the third question, and it comes back to what Mr. Blasch was talking to, is, what are the consequences to me as a second unit owner if I don't comply?
Okay, so my understanding is that there's a moratorium on enforcement in part of the code, code compliance, secondary code compliance program, is that staff cannot put them into abatement, that's the whole purpose of it. So they're not, their applications are not supposed to go into the regular file, they're supposed to be kept confidential. So as of now, the policy and the direction from the City Council to staff was, you know, don't abate them. We don't care that there's fifty-two out there that have legalized their illegal units through the sanitary district, because we have a program that says, I can't use that information to abate them. That's my understanding. So that's where we stand right now. Now, that's subject to change, of course. What's different about the program? Okay, so, so what the two bodies did when they split it and they worked on it, in particular, I would say the Building Appeals Board, they tried to make it, they worked with me, and they tried to make it very clear, delineated this checklist, because part of it is the public's, and I hate to reiterate what you hear all the time, but their lack of trust with the city officials, or how cities process things. So the idea is to create in writing a very clear path from point A to point Z. Part of it for the Building Appeals part was this checklist. So you get this checklist, and you can say, you know, what do you need to have? As far as what is your unit going to look like, what's a hazard? What do stairs need to have, what's mechanical hazard? So hopefully, a person can kind of hire, do that checklist themselves, see what they're going to get themselves into before either one, they reach out to the ombudsman, or they reach out to city staff. Second of all, there was a prohibition that if you had a converted garage, you weren't going to be, you were automatically, automatically precluded from using the program, even if you could somehow make the unit legal. You just, the program didn't apply to you. So anybody that had that. So for instance, the arguments that, I mean, this has gone on, like I said, for a really long time, but a lot of the pros and cons of that would be, well, a lot of these units that are converted garages have been that way for decades, and, you know, the lack of parking has already been absorbed into the neighborhood, there isn't additional impacts, and people have already been living with, and that, so why not allow those units to become legal? That was the thought process. Both, you know, both the boards agreed on that, and said, you know, we're going to take a look on a case-by-case basis whether we should legalize garage conversions, or whether we shouldn't, you know? So also, to answer the other question about making something easier for those that don't come in through the regular legitimate process, both boards agreed that we should be looking at the second unit program, or second unit ordinance as it is. I mean, there's something, there's a thought here, that the ordinance as it sits today, and whether or not you can do a second unit facilitates illegal units. You just make it so hard to have one, that's why there's so many people doing it without coming through the regular permit process. And I think both boards agreed that, that there's, there's some revisions to it that need to be done. For instance, we bring up, and, you know, it seems to be always on Signal Street, but the Fred Fisher situation where, you know, he had a big, large acre, you know, multiple acre property, and couldn't have anything but one home and one second unit, even though he has a large property, and why couldn't he have a cottage and a single-family, or a secondary residential unit? So these are all things they thought about, and they also, both boards wanted to take a look at the second unit ordinance, so that it wasn't such a disparity between these really strict rules, but really lenient rules for the, those that are done without permit. So, so to answer your question, what will make a difference? Maybe nothing will make a difference, but these boards really thoughtfully went through both of these, and they, and they really tried to remove what they thought were obstacles, and, and let those people that could get second units by ride if they could, and that, but then still having enough rules and regulations that they're not impacting the neighbors that these units are adjacent to, or creating undue impacts to a neighborhood, and, and, but, you know, their, their mission was to make it, make a program that would take in more units and make them legal. That was how they looked at it, and that's how they worked on it. So I hope I answered all your questions, I'm not sure.
Well, actually, you didn't. But, and, and, and it's fair, because I probably asked them poorly. Or, or lack of clarity. But again, the question was, what's the difference between the two? That this new one is better than the other one, it's going to entice or enhance our ability to get these units in compliance? And, and I, you didn't really state anything, you know, one, two, three, four, or five. That, that'd be the first thing, and maybe you don't have that, that's, you can get back to me on that. But I, but I don't understand the difference between the two, they look very similar. The second thing is, even looking at your handouts, if you're not a general contractor or some type of a builder, I don't know how anyone could take one of those and do their own personal checklist. I just, I, I don't see that happening. Now, I see it being a guideline as for me to hire somebody. So, so I see the benefit of that, but if I'm actually going to hand this to someone over a counter, and expect them to do that themselves, and that's, you implied that earlier, that it's for their use, I just don't know how we expect them to do that.
Okay, so let me clarify that, that's not what I meant by that. I meant that we're trying to be transparent and tell them what the things are that they need to look at. You know, you hear it all the time here, that the, the public doesn't feel that the process is transparent. By putting down what either they, you know, if they had the, I mean, you know, you can look at your, your stair treads and things like that, or you can hire somebody, or you can have the ombudsman come out. But it's, we had this conversation with the Babs, you know, there's a couple of realtors on the Planning Commission, and a realtor on the Building Appeals Board, and it's very common that when somebody sells a house, that they hire a home inspector. It's the same general thing that you would do with a home inspector. Have this checklist, these are the type of things that you would look at, and you'd go through via either that, or a contractor, or the ombudsman. But the idea was to fully expose it, what are the things we're going to But the idea was to fully expose it, what are the things we're going to look at, rather than have the person get into it and then all of a sudden decide, oh, I didn't know you were going to look at that. Of course, I know that's illegal. Oh, that throws me out right away. That was the idea.
So, so again, as, as a part of this transparency, i- is there anything that says this, I built, your house was built in nineteen eighty-six and right now, under our guidelines, that you're going to pay the fees that were required to construct that, that dwelling back in nineteen eighty-six. However, if you don't go through our program and we in turn come after the fact that we want you to comply and you have to pay today's fees, I think the difference might, it's almost double. I think nineteen eighty-five or seventy-five, I was reading this somewhere, it was four thousand dollars to, to, today, it's eight thousand to nine thousand dollars. Again, I think that might help or entice someone who's on the, who's, who's, you know, straddling that line of do I or don't I? And again, I just, part of what I'm hearing is we're, we're creating an environment of corruption. And, and I'm not saying you are, I'm saying we, I said we. By, by not having anything in this that says, do it. Like Paul said, we're bending over backwards to work with you. However, if you don't do it, these are the consequences of your behavior. And I think we need to be clear on that. I just, I just think it's important, i- if we want this to be successful, that we know, that we know both sides of that coin.
We can change the ordinance any way that the council wants to change it. That, that was what they, that's what.
And I'm sorry for.
Yeah. So I'm just, you know, I mean, honestly, this is just the way those two boards presented it, was their ideas. And, and I just facilitated the direction that they felt that they had from council. But if they, that direction is changed, I'd be more than willing to go back and work with them again.
One quick question before we go to the public. What, what does this particular program have in it that makes it, that would be making it easier, other than maybe the fees, you know, if you charge fees from nineteen eighty-six versus today? What is it in this particular program that makes it easier for somebody to come in and get into compliance versus if this program wasn't in place, if they just came in and wanted to get their property into compliance?
Okay, so, on the, if you turn to page attachment A, the modified zoning standards. Those were worked on pretty extensively by, I think, originally before we split them, both bodies, but then ultimately by the planning commission. And, you know, the separating it out, exterior design, they eliminated all standards for the, again, with the idea that these are existing units. And the primary statement that I heard over and over and over again is that these units are old. They've been existing for a really long time. We're not talking about somebody who just went out and did one, I mean, they would, of course, get captured by this, but the majority, they felt, were older. D, lot size, no minimum lot size required for a compliance unit. I mean, they just relaxed all the standards. I mean, they're all, they're, they are very much relaxed. Floor area, our current code allows six forty. The state allows up to twelve hundred. They changed it to the state guidelines, the maximum size of a compliance unit shall be twelve hundred square feet. However, at no time shall a second dwelling unit exceed the size of the primary unit. You know, we still have to have a primary and an ancillary. Lot coverage, at no time shall the compliance unit cause a lot coverage to go over. So that's still in there. Setbacks, they relaxed the setbacks. The compliance unit may encroach into rear and side yard setbacks, but no closer than five feet. I mean, these are very liberal. They, so they relaxed everything. Parking, the compliance unit may satisfy its parking requirement through common use of parking provided for the primary residence or use of on-street parking. I mean, you're allowing them to use on-street parking to satisfy the parking requirement. The parking space provided for the second unit shall function independently from the parking spaces provided for the primary unit. All utilities serving the compliance units may have a common or separate service before they required to have common service. And, you know, and that was a problem for people because a lot of these people have separate services. I don't know how they got them, but they did because, you know, they're, they have a rental, renter and they have them. So they removed the, let's see, they had, let's see, they still, I think that's probably it. And then they want a sworn statement or declaration, the property is owned or occupied upon the request of the city. So a lot of these things that are really restricted. I mean, our lot size is really high here in Ojai for having a second unit. So a lot of these things have been really relaxed based on the premise that, that as I understood when I came here, the direction was make the program work and get more units in there. So I think that they really took a, a handle at these, at these, the zoning standards. And then they, the other thing is that a unit can, have been built within the last year and still comply with this program. So, we talked about that a lot and there was a lot of discussion over that, whether, you know, what, what's the appropriate date to have, et cetera. And then, like I said, as far as the in-service date, that's another issue where someone had, we provided this, this policy that's kind of what other cities do, that were suggested that we look at. There were a couple of different ones, Ventura and I think Sierra Madre and a couple others, where, you know, the idea is that some units may have been permitted. I mean, city records aren't always the best. We're going back many, many, many years. Something may have been built in the county and the county has records. So there's a way of, of deciding an in-service date. When, how far back does this unit go? And so we're allowing them to provide this documentation, which is the county assessor's initial date recognizing the second dwelling unit, because of course, you know, they'll tax even if it's not a legal unit. Escrow documents identifying the unit, prior building, planning or code enforcement records, real estate transfer disclosure forms. So the idea is to give these people tools to be able to say, well, I can come up with it, county assessor saying this was been assessed since nineteen sixty-four. So that's where this unit comes from, even though you can't find a permit for it. So we're giving them lots of tools for them to be able to legitimize this without making it super painful or taking a unit, because this was really what they wanted, was they wanted a process that didn't take somebody who had a unit that was built in nineteen sixty-four and make them have it built, bring it up to today's standards. That was a big concern. So we give them tools about, okay, so how can we set a time, date stamp a time where some of these people are going to be able to establish that this unit was in sixty-four and we're not going to make them bring everything up, except for those things that they have to, which would be, you know, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, those types of things. So that was what the two bodies wanted, in particular, the Building Appeals Board. So this, this, these processes are all about giving a big toolkit to people who are hopefully the person realizes, maybe there is, you know, potential for them to get this legalized as a unit. So that's how, that's how they saw it, is, is bringing more people in. You know, of course, we haven't tried it, so we don't know.
I, I can appreciate the, and, and knowing what it says, I, I can see that there's a lot of concessions that we're trying to make. I'm not sure about the off-street parking issue, but that's just one. But my question is, we've tried this and five people have, have come forward. What would be wrong for us to now code-enforce the ones we know about and make them comply with these guidelines? Instead of having them voluntarily coming forward, why couldn't we code-enforce the ones to come forward? If they're not coming by themselves and then have a, have a termination date when now they got to do whatever they had to do before? Or maybe not? Maybe just keep this in place? But that's just, I'm, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not asking you necessarily to, to respond to that. It's just, if we're not getting people to come forward voluntarily and we know that they've already paid the sewer fees and whatever else they've had to pay, and they've already received an assessment increase from the tax collector, then either you're going to come forward and comply, or we're going to, we're going to, we're going to force you to come forward and comply. Just my thoughts.
Any other comments before I turn you to public?
That's what I, I think it's time to.
Yeah. Mr. Dewar?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm not only going to beat this horse tonight, I'm going to ride it into the ground and then I'm going to bark down the hole. This is not what the community deserves. I have a, a list. I will supply this to staff, members of the Building Appeals Board, whoever. If you would look at page two of twenty, on attachment A, modified zoning standards under A, lease term. This is, this is rather ambiguous in that it says, there shall be no limit on the length of occupancy or rental contract on any compliance unit. Does that mean that there's not going to be a length of occupancy limit, or you can't have a rental contract? Or does it mean there's not going to be a length on, limit on the rental contract? It's not clear. It's very ambiguous. Attachment A, page nine of twenty. If you just scroll down the list with me, I would ask any of you to define the following: adequate, exposed, improper, lack of continuity, cross-contamination, no hot water, properly installed, improper, too close, inadequate, new or enlarged, new or increased, loads, cracked, damaged, lack of ventilation, lack of weather protection. Page eleven of twenty. Ballisters have openings larger than four. I'm not sure for what, but that's probably going to be a question that will have to be answered. Page twelve of twenty. The property will be evaluated for hazards, including but not limited to lead paint, asbestos flood hazards. If the qualifying property is identified as having a hazard, then the condition must be abated. Unit is not free of environmental hazards, peeling or cracking paint, lead or asbestos. So if a second unit has lead paint or asbestos, it doesn't qualify for the program or it must be abated? Right there, you've eliminated ninety percent of the second units in this community because our housing stock is so tremendously old, almost every building in this community has lead paint or asbestos. The wording in this document makes it sound like they will have to take out the lead paint and the asbestos before they can participate in the proper, in the, in the, in the program. Page sixteen of twenty. Applicant has, this, this is just, I don't know if this is arrogance or what, but it, but it, but it really bothers me tremendously. Applicant has ten days to appeal. So if a homeowner is declined for the program, they can appeal, they have ten days to get all of the documents ready and, and submit it. The city then has forty-five days to schedule the meeting. And then they can let the, the homeowner know in as little as ten days that the meeting is going to be held. So again, ten days, forty-five days, ten days. Not only that, a homeowner, twice in this application, is asked to sign under penalty of perjury that they're telling the truth. Nowhere, anywhere in that document is anyone from the city required to do the same thing. Shameful.
Mr. Ulrich.
Mr. Ulrich.
Ulrich, four-eight-seven Gridley Road. Quick comment. Having attended the meetings, the October twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen meeting of the Building Appeals Board, made their recommendations. I don't think those recommendations were completely comprehensive, but they made their recommendations, moved things on for the Planning Commission to review on the nineteenth of November. Building Appeal Board never saw the document again. Never saw the recommended recommendations, didn't know that anything was consolidated or incorporated. Now you guys got it. Strictly from a processing protocol perspective, I can appreciate the economy, perhaps, that was envisioned, but that is not producing a document. That's not a process that will produce a document that is comprehensive and reflective of those bodies' input. It still isn't done. I think you're making observations about other things. I'm just making the observation from an observer's perspective. This is not how you get a consolidated document with the input of all of the entities confirmed, checked, reviewed, and absolutely incorporated. Thank you.
Mr. Daddy?
Rhonda, would you be kind with the time, place? Because we have to go over this tomorrow. And so I want to make sure I get my points across. Tim already spoke to the penalty of perjury. What I'm very concerned is, I, I'm very concerned with what the intent of non-enforcement was when it was done, who did it, and at what period of time and what was on the plate. Whether it was a rain issue, I have no idea. I'm concerned when I take a look at what we're trying to do, which is make it easy and understandable for people to come in, but then when I see all the holes in the process, and then I see that tomorrow, we have this on our plate, which we fought for five years to keep off of our plate, long before we had an appeals board. When I see some of the rules that say, you must have a seven-foot ceiling, why don't we just eliminate two or three hundred homes? And when we do, I want to know from you folks what you're going to do about it. Are you going to red-tag them? And you're going to knock them down like the Chevrolet property that we did over there on Franklin Montgomery? What is the will of the council? Now, I'm sitting on the Building Appeals Board incredibly uncomfortable because I kind of know what some people want to do, I know what staff wants to do, I know what the recommendations want to do, I understand what the Planning Commission wants to do. I don't believe, maybe I slept during a meeting, but I don't believe I've gotten direction from this council. We may have gotten direction from a council or two councils or three councils ago, and we're still working on some of these old things. But ambiguity is a killer and we have to have a goal. And what I don't really think that you're comprehending is that you're looking at fifty-eight, add a zero behind that at least. We knew that six or seven years ago. When we have five hundred of these, are you willing to throw two thousand people out of their homes? What is the real answer? What are we really trying to accomplish? When I look at the documents you know and I know, we have people that are built on a corner lot or a side lot where they, they actually have a footprint on the rear property line and the side property line. When that goes, what's the answer? What are we going to do with that? What kind of problems are we going to run into with financial institutions that no longer lend money? Because what they're going to say is, we can no longer use these units as real property for valuation to determine a loan. Because we know it can't be put back in its current size and scope. So they're going to start discounting. So you're not going to have to seventy percent or eighty percent. You might have sixty percent loan to value. So you start running into these issues. We've run into this issue all over the state. So what I would hope you would do is I would hope you make sure that all these questions are answered. But first, a couple of months ago, I stood up here and said, don't pass any more ordinances until you have the guts to come together with the grips of what the enforcement's going to be. The enforcement has to start first. I need to know what the penalties are when we come. When somebody comes before us, we need to know. But based on these things, the ambiguities and what we need, we do have a tool that will show adequate enforcement. It's this tool. It's the International Code and the Maintenance Code. And that's what we fought to keep out of here. These will show the definitions of all of the holes in the gap. Does it appear that this is being hitchhiked on? I'm not going to go ahead and make that allegation. I'm just going to say that the contractors are going to look at this and they're going to figure it out and they're going to have to get a separate reference. And we don't have people that are really capable of understanding a lot of these issues. have people that are really capable of understanding a lot of these issues. So when you say adequate ventilation, say seven-foot height. The other thing for our, for Scott Howard over there, Mr. Howard, is I believe that we did not require permits within this city until 1947. And we've been over this, we beat this thing to death 10 times. So we need to take those people off. 1947, if you want to know what is going to cause a change in behavior, all those people that can prove that the house was built prior to 1947 are going to have a much easier time of complying. But then it runs into some more problems, since I had an interview with the school board today on this bond issue. Is the city clearing the school permits that they're entitled to fees on all permitted units before the city issues a permit? Are we doing that? We have to get will serve letter, we have to make sure that the other things are cleared, we've got to make sure that they're cleared for flood, and we have to make sure before they get a permit that they have paid their sewer and they have paid their school fees. And are we cutting out the school district, or are we actually going ahead and complying with that? I'd like to know, are we collecting school fees? Okay. And I think the people need to know that that's not in here, that the city's going to demand that school fees need to be paid too. I didn't see that in here. So if you got a 1,200 square foot at $3 plus, there's going to be 3,600 bucks. We don't want any gotchas if people are going to come in. The last thing is this. The school is a public agency? The county assessor's office is a public agency? The sanitary district is a public agency? And how dare we say, if you come in and talk to us, we're going to give you, you know, it's going to be anonymous. How do we do that when all of these are public documents from three other agencies? How do we turn around and say, hey, you come and talk to us, and we're going to pretend you don't exist, we don't know where you are? Does the city have the authority to give anonymity from the other three public agencies? I don't think so. So I, I think what we're going to find, and I went to the sanitary district last night, Council Wyrick was there, they're going to go full guns. You're going to, are going to have these things coming out of your ears soon. We've been talking about this, but the time is now. They're, they're ready. They're ready before this thing is over. We've, we've kicked it down the road, we've kicked it down the road, we kicked it down the road with RENA, we never really kind of put it together. We've got the RENA issue done now, and now we're going to have the sanitation come in, and they're going to start enforcing this thing. And we're going to find that they're going to collect the money that these people have been using their system for. And there's about a $10 million piece of change sitting in Ojai that they can collect by going ahead and forcing these units to comply with the sanitary district. We have another issue. We have a lot of these second units that are polluting our groundwater. We've got a terrible INI problem. We've got a terrible groundwater problem. And these things are going to get cleaned up by the sanitary department, and I hope we're ready. One obs bud man is not going to be enough to handle this problem. One, we're going to get hundreds of these things as soon as you put this thing in here. The other thing is this, it's drawing the artificial line in the sand. What do we start, eight years ago on the, the RENA program? And we kicked that down the road forever? If we keep extending the end of the moratorium, the sanitary district is going to go ahead and determine what that date's going to be for us. So I would hope the first thing you do is you come up with what you're going to do for enforcement, and then backfill. We'll discuss this tomorrow. There's a lot of things that I would like to see modified. There's some missing things we have out. We need to go ahead and change some of our rules, our basic housing rules are pitiful. We still allow, allow for Class C roofs. We still allow for a bad Class C roof if it's damaged under 50% in a single year to rebuild just as ugly as it is. What we say is adequate electricity, instead of saying, no more fuse stats or fuses, we want 100 amp minimum service. We have specificity. And then when you talk about this, and I remember Betsy talking about how we need sprinklers for the puppy, Councilwoman Clapp, and it was only going to cost 2,000 to put the sprinkler system in, which apparently we're not going to charge. But I went to our code official, and I said, does that mean you can put the sprinklers in and not abate? Not abate the lead glazing, the tile glazing with lead? Not abate the lead paint? Not abate the asbestos? And guess what? I was told, no, you're going to have to abate all that. And I said, but that's $100,000. That's $100,000. Plus the $3,300 for the school. What are we doing?
And that was, and, and going back, I mean, I understand the importance of this compliance element to doing the second unit and getting that in place. I, I know we're talking about the guidelines today, and we, we will have the opportunity to hopefully go and, and move on that. But in terms of, of reviewing this, and, and my question was, the procedures is reviewing, I had a lot of questions with this, the part that the building's appeals boards recommended, because I didn't get a lot of the electric, the language. And so that was part of my question. I don't know if other council members have questions for the appeals board. Is this, it's, do you guys validate this recommendation?
Well, I mean, what I have, you can see my name on there. What I have is that I finally got exasperated with the building official and our prior city attorney, and I said, pick a date, I don't really care anymore. If you want to make it 2006, let's start somewhere, or we will never start the process.
Councilman Laura?
Yes.
I, I want to jump in here because it's, it's almost 11:20. And, and I guess I'm going to kind of crack a joke. I think between, I think Mr. Daddy and Ms. Wald at some late hour might kind of emulate the Lincoln Douglas debates for us at times, which is great because of the combined level of expertise the two of you have is sometimes overwhelming. My point being, I'm, that it is 11:15. I think we have a clear request by the Building Appeals Board to look at the formal document draft that they, they, they would like to look at. Four of them have been here tonight. Perfect example, perfect opportunity to hear all of this. And, and frankly, at this point, given also the fact that I don't know if you can discuss this tomorrow night, because I don't think it's agendized.
Some of it is.
My point being, I think you have an issue with the lack of agenda on this item for tomorrow night. You probably need to have a couple of meetings in order to really fully deal with this matter. And I'm thinking that the appropriate thing is to, at, at this point, at this late hour, just have, direct them to take it up again for a, a final review at their first possible time to agendize, and that we, we move on at this point, because it's 11:20.
And I understand that it's late, but at the same time, we haven't provided any input, or any clear or any opinion of where we want to go. And that's really important, and I, and that's why we were, I wanted the opportunity to also, because if it's, I understand it's not agendized, and I agree that they should look at it, but we should at least give them some direction.
Well, and I understand that, but I think, I, I think what I'm trying to say is that we've already, there, we've had testimony about some, some small, just, you know, editing errors, all right? We have some other issues about the, the expiration date. Again, some issues about ambiguity of, of language. In terms of direction from council, again, I'm, I'm just thinking at this point, we should just enforce more of a process of having a formal draft, of having the, the Building Appeals Board have a chance to deliberate on the recommended document from staff, which technically they have not had a chance to do. And then we just leave it at that for now.
Any other input from other council members?
I, I agree. I agree that I would like to have the, the Building Appeals Board take a look at this because they haven't had an opportunity to, even though it seems as though the Planning Commission was looking at one set of, of issues that don't correspond to what the Building Appeals Board is looking at, you know? The building code and the zoning code are separate and apart, and somehow we're trying to integrate that, that document to include both. I am a little, for lack of a better word, surprised at the ambiguity of the forms that I think need to be cleaned up, and whoever drafted them, it looks like it's Planning Commission most of the time that I see the ambiguity in. Those need to be cleaned up, and I really think we need to get from our commission, particularly the, the Building Appeals Board, their thoughts on enforcement. I mean, do we want to go through this and continue to ask for volunteers to come forward and have to worry about an ombudsman and worry about all that goes along with that? Or do we believe at this point in time, with these relaxed standards, that we should begin enforcing it? And I'd like to know what the Appeals Board has to say about that.
Councilmember Haney?
I'll keep it short, because I stole like 25 minutes of my conversation with Kathleen. I'm sorry for that. You know, you get in a tangent, you just get directed, and you lose track of time. I'm for Building Appeals. I'm also for sending back the planning, and I'll be honest with you, I'm also open for another public discussion. I'm actually open to meet at Sarasota Park and actually have some form of joint session, and let's get the public involved in this one more time, because Bob, listening to you, is kind of like, well, you guys are going to be the heavy, you're going to put the people out on the street. You know what? We're not putting the people out on the street. It's the people that have built these units or own these units that are not in compliance. So I'm, I'm not going to own the fact that it's on me that I'm putting someone on the street. I'm going to put that on the person who is managing this unit improperly and illegally. So that's the first thing. But I think we need to take it to the public, and we need to have an open forum, and we need to allow people come in and talk about this. That's where I would take it.
And in my opinion, we do need to take it back to the Appeals Board and the Planning Commission to review their recommendations. I agree with that, and with that, with the language of the ambiguity. But on top of that, we need to connect with the sanitary district, because this is coming down the pipeline, and if it is true that right now we have 58 potential applicants out there, and that we could add a zero to it, we really need to move this forward. And I don't know if it's necessarily the interests of the city to have a public hearing. I feel like this issue's been going on for years. We're to the point where we need to start adding some code enforcement, in my opinion, and some, some rules in place that will get things moving right now. And I would like recommendations from not only the Appeals Board, but the Planning Commission in terms of what if applicants do not comply with this program, what are going to be the, the consequences of not doing so? That would be my directions to staff and make it clear, and I think we can move on.
Any other suggestions?
No.
Well, thank you, Mr. Daddy.
Well, we already, we're done.
Just going to take two, two minutes. Something I'd like you to keep in mind, you know, over the weekend, I, I was invited and spent a few hours at a lady, it was her 99th birthday. Okay, she was born in 1914. I wasn't even far from being, in San Francisco. So that's 12 years within the San Francisco earthquake, and, and more importantly, the fire. So she showed me her photo album, 99 years old. Turns out, she would buy and sell properties, great craftsman style, move them, design an apartment, put them up. This is, this is in the shadow of the '06 quake. So these are the kind of people that I talked to. And what I hear, so, so picture, and they don't have a second unit, but I talked to people that age who have, maybe World War II vets, fixed income, they might have a house and a second unit. So how do you get them in compliance? And just think about it, they're on a fixed income. Hey, we, we got code issues with our second unit, but we're afraid to call code enforcement. We, we got sparks coming out of the whatever. So how do you get them to call code enforcement? So what I hear from people like this, and this is a lady, 99, you, they may not have the codes we have now, but she understands building, and, and they're very safety oriented, and they want to be able to call somebody that can come over and say, you know what, I'm going to turn the circuit breaker off, and I want you to sign this saying, the city to, to keep the city from being liable if the house burns down, and here's three electrical contractors, you got to get it fixed or bring it in compliance or whatever. But is there a city service without hitting these people with huge, huge fees to where they can go, you know, we understand, we got to pay the contractors to bring this up to speed? And I think that's how you're going to get these people to go, that's, that's a city program we can live with and climb on board. And I, I think you really got to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And not a lot, lot of litany of lists, and it's just got to happen.
Thank you. And I'm going to close, we're not, we're going to have to table the next item, which is training for commissioner, board members, council members and staff. But should we finish with the redevelopment successor agency, or?
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to now convene as Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, and, oh, that's it.
Can I just add one last conclusion?
We got to move on. We really got to move on. So we're moving with the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. Do I hear a motion to, or consent count?
Move to approve the consent counter.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
I'll second it.
Haney?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Blatt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. And now I'm going to reconvene as a city council, and I'm going to, any reports from, from council members?
I have one. 30 seconds. In fact, the sanitary district is moving forward with a ordinance committee discussion of how to deal with their EDUs that are second units. I'm going to, I'm, Mr. Palmer has offered to discuss what they're planning, and I will be reporting back to council. I had this discussion with the, the sanitary district. Obviously, it's of considerable interest to our citizens, and they are moving forward. And I think that's a good dovetail to what we've just discussed, and I'll be on top of that and reporting back to what they're doing at the sanitary district.
Are you their liaison to this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, and then the second thing I want to say is I want to just publicly, I know just for the record, really quickly, commend the Arts Commission. I was so thrilled to be at their meeting, and they've been such a great example, I think, of a commission that sees a problem, works on the code, sees how the code needs to, you know, make sure it's followed, and just, you know, just, just really focus on their goals, their aspect of this, of the, of the code. And it's just, I just, I just want to say, I think the Arts Commission has been a great example, the more I've learned about them, about what I think we all want to see in our, in commissions, and how they, and how they operate. And I just want to publicly commend them for that.
Any other reports from council?
No. Moving to Mr. Clark, city attorney.
I'm the city manager.
I just wanted to briefly say that even though we're busy with a whole lot of stuff, we are working on a few process things to make our process work better, one of which is we have a, a form now for information from the Community Development Department so people can pose questions in writing and get their responses in writing. And that's been very well received by the public and seems to be off to a good start. We've also set some fixed hours for the building official where people can come in, and there's a sign posted in the Community Development Department so they know that. And in other communities, when people learn that that's available, it makes it a lot easier for them to access the building official. And then on, on the idea of an intake form, a number of people have suggested that, and we are working on an intake form, and I think it'll be very helpful, especially in maintaining continuity over time and making sure that we're implementing all the different programs that we've adopted. So I'll give you some more thorough information on that later, but I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you. Our city attorney? No, our chief?
Just briefly, we're still seeing bicycle thefts. We're still getting about a handful a month, and I would say most, if not all, are unlocked bikes along the arcade in that area. So if the wrong person at the right time comes by, you know, your bike's going to be gone. So please lock your bikes up, same with your cars, hide your valuables, lock your cars. A lot of these thefts can be prevented, they're crimes of opportunity. So we'd appreciate the public support with that.
Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, continuing, now that we understand that we have hired our compliance Now that we understand that we have hired our compliance officer, I'm coming around to a discussion we had when I was first elected and I was in your office on orientation. That is it. And I've had the opportunity of having a conversation with Mr. Stewart about this already, and I reminded that we had talked about using the volunteers and policing as maybe additional eyes for the compliance officer. And he was very receptive, I think, I think, I'm not going to put words in Mr. Clark's mouth, but I know you were receptive, and I just hope that that is pursued in terms of enhancing the investment that the council's made in the compliance officer.
Absolutely. I'd like to see that happen as well.
All right, thank you.
Mayor City Clerk?
Real quick, we had a very productive open forum, excuse me, meeting this afternoon about the website. We had the community members attend, and we got some really good ideas. The lady Skyped in, and so we're really excited about moving forward, and she's working on a design. And again, they just want more and more information out there, so I'll be talking to Rob during budget cycle about what we can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Real quick, what kind of things?
More and more information?
Yeah, like in...
Oh, well, they talked about the applications being posted, when people submit things, basically through the whole process. They want more archival information put up there. Just, I can't even think because I'm tired.
I know, it's late.
Yeah.
You know, I was wondering what was going on here at 6 o'clock because I was in such a hurry to be on time tonight.
Yeah.
Seriously, I pulled up at 6 o'clock, and I go, "There's no cars out there." And I go, "Wow, there's no one here to actually have a discussion with tonight." Then I saw people in here, and I went, "Did I miss it?"
Yeah. And they want like an FAQ, you know? Questions are asked over and over again, and one of the good suggestions they said is do, which would help is if someone comes to the community development counter, they want to get a permit for a tree, what do they do? And have like an Excel sheet or little boxes says, "If you want this, this is where you go. If you want, if you have an emergency, this is where you want to go." So we're going to look at that. And fillable forms, being able to pay online, and we're going to create a wish list and put up so people can write in, and we can add that to budget accordingly.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, and that, I adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. (end of transcript)